Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Taos County Board of Commissioners meeting for today, October 21st, 2014. For the record, it is 9:05 a.m. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Johnson.
Present.
Vice Chair Sanchez.
Present.
Chairman.
Present.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Present. Okay. Commissioner Sanchez, if you can lead us with the pledge of allegiance.
Yes, Chairman.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda for today. Item four, Commissioners, the agenda before you, is there any changes to it?
They'll move as presented, Chairman.
I did want to add that Mr. Jacob Caldwell, under item 8A, is going to make some introductions as well as a presentation on this one. With that, that's the only change that I have, Commissioners. Commissioners?
They'll move as amended then, Chairman.
Okay. Is there a second? I'll go ahead in second. Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sanchez.
Yes.
Just that Jake was going to make the presentation on the traffic.
Yes. Okay. We'll go on to citizen concerns. We'll move on to item five. Anyone wishes to speak, sir? Go ahead and come forward. State your name for the record. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Manuel Ortiz. Members of the Board of Commissioners, I'm here today to request, I'm on the request of a speed hump there in the Hondo Seco Road. I live next to the Catholic Church. And last year, we had a meeting with our Commissioner Blankenhorn and I think it was our manager and the former supervisor, which was Rick Chavez, reference our speeders going through. And I can imagine that he's not in that area, it's all over the county. But there were five speed humps installed, which we really appreciate the work the county did because it has slowed a lot of the traffic through that area. But we were informed that we were, they were going to let us know when they were going to do these jobs because we could tell them more or less where we wanted them done, which they're okay with that. But there was one missing. One is before, I mean going towards Seco, past the church, past the church about another, maybe 50 yards, there's the last one past the main ditch, the Yano ditch, and that slows the traffic going down the road. But I'm requesting that we have one more installed by the church because we have Sundays or other doings, we have church services or whatever, and there's people coming out either during the day or night, and another speed hump will really slow down more traffic. And if I could lead them to where we really need that speed hump. And also, there's a bus stop right there past the church, which the kids, even though they're picking up the kids, or there's kids playing around that area in back of the church on the playground. So I'm just requesting that we take into commission and take into consideration of installing one more speed hump and before the winter comes. And I think that will really help any tragedy or any accident to happen in that area. And that's, I'm requesting that, and we, myself and the neighbors around here, will really appreciate it if we could do that.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. And so we've had four or five speed humps already.
Yeah, that's below the church, down below, and one past the Yano ditch. But the one that we really want is by the church. And I can tell them more or less where if it's going to be done, and I hope it's done because we need it. We don't want nothing to happen because there's a lot of Sundays and night last, about a month ago, we had vistas at night and it was really dark and there was traffic going through. But if we didn't have those speed humps, but those really helped a lot.
Okay.
I mean, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Mr. Ortiz, thank you for bringing this before us. I'm sure that Mr. Salazar would like to go down there and look at the area. And I've been there for funeral masses and for your fiestas. And it is, it's a safety concern, I think, and I'm glad that you did bring this up. And, you know, if we can go down there, Commissioner Blankenhorn, I think it's a great idea. Thank you, Mr. Ortiz.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. Mr. Salazar, Earl, you're familiar with the area. Did you want to come forward just a little bit and speak to that? What's your thoughts?
I think it'd be wise to put another speed bump there near the church just to keep it safe for the parishioners that are coming out of church.
And, Mr. Malone, we do have a process, of course, with regards to speed humps?
We do, Mr. Chairman, and I'll certainly get with Mr. Salazar. If it's his recommendation that we add a speed bump, we'll move that forward. Obviously, we can't act on it today, but we'll move that forward.
And, Mr. Chairman, in that process, Earl, if you'll just, you know, I know in some other areas, we put a speed bump and then it transfers the water on to certain areas. And so we just want to make sure that all those issues are mitigated in your study there to make sure that we don't place a speed bump and then it creates another problem down the road.
Right.
So, yeah, but it is a good idea.
I'll go out and assess it first.
And Commissioner Blankenhorn, it's your district.
It is. And I haven't taken a good look at it, but I certainly defer to the professional advice and the people who live there. And to the extent that it could be helpful to slow traffic down, it's a critical area, and I am in favor of it. So maybe we'll get a chance to go out there and take a look at it. Or if not with me, then obviously, Mr. Salazar will do it on his own. So, thank you for that, Mr. Ortiz, and thank you, Mr. Salazar.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else that wishes to speak? Ms. Aveta, good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. I just want to give you an update about what's happening in the hospital. The first thing I want to talk about is our CEO update. And I want you to know that we have three candidates that are coming in next week, and that'll be on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. They will be interviewing with the board, with the administrative team, with the medical staff. And then we will be having an open forum for the staff to ask questions. That'll happen with each one of the candidates. And so hopefully, one of them is going to be a good fit for us and we can move forward. I'm sorry to let you guys know that Ron Davis, who was our interim CEO, is unable to continue this position because of the altitude and his health. He was unable to acclimate to the altitude here. So just a little bit about what's going on. Steve is our CFO and he is, he will continue to be our interim. We do not look at bringing in another interim unless neither of, you know, neither of these three candidates fit the bill, then we'll entertain that. Other than that, we will continue, Steve will continue in the interim role, and the administrative team will continue in their roles. So that's what's happening with our CEO position. The other thing I just want everybody to know is that we have been actively working with UNM for a partnership, number one priority being our emergency department. And so UNM is proposing, or will be here to do an assessment of our emergency room and make recommendations and come with a proposal with us. We're hoping to complete those negotiations. Probably that won't happen until next year, but we're moving forward with that and wanted you to know that that was going on. The Ebola, big deal for everybody, everywhere, right now. Paige did come, did a presentation last couple of weeks ago. Wanted you to know that we are actively in the education phase. So what's happening right now is we're doing the education to all our departments. We're focusing right now in our emergency department because that is where we're going to see the first thing come in. So we are doing active educa, we will start active education. In other words, by active, we will be demonstrating the proper apparel that need to be used and how to remove that apparel. So that will be a hands-on demonstration. So that will be happening in our hospital, and we've already begun the education process.
Ms. Aveta, real quick, I know we've heard it over and over, you know, through social media, through the news. What are the symptoms of Ebola?
They're actually very much like the flu symptoms. And in fact, they're probably very identical to the flu symptoms. The things that you need to ask when somebody presents that way are, have they been in contact with anybody from, that has traveled to West Africa? Have they been traveling to West Africa? Asking them some key points, whether to move forward to isolation or not. But those are the questions you need to ask because unfortunately, the symptoms are flu-like symptoms. So, you know, a temperature greater than 100, 100.4, I believe, you know, the aches and pains, the cough, the diarrhea, the stomach ache, those kind of things. So, you know, as we deal with flu every year, that's what we see every single year. So those are the questions that we need to ask for that. Okay?
Thank you very much.
And then just finally, I just want to say the other thing that we wanted to address a little bit was the, you know, after learning in the Taos News about the repeal of the 1/8 gross receipts tax, that became a little bit alerting to us, and we just wanted to, you know, to bring that up for discussion here. We do, we do know that that 1/8 gross receipts tax is geared toward healthcare at this point. And we know that there has been a lot of changes in the state around the indigent funding and all that kind of thing. But we are, as a hospital, at Holy, you know, Holy Cross Hospital and all hospitals across the nation, continue to have to work with the reductions that are happening, state level, national level, and reimbursement. So we continue having the issues that we're having. We know that there are a lot of healthcare needs. Mr. Blankenhorn really stated well that we do need to put monies into mental health, that's an absolute. But there are a lot of other healthcare issues that are going on in the community that we need that tax for. So I just, I just wanted to bring that up for discussion, not understanding exactly why we're going towards repealing that gross receipts tax. We don't understand the purpose of that. And even though the last year financially, we've made some strides, not where we want to be by any means, we're getting, we're doing better, but we are recognizing that down the road, we just cannot continue even where we're going right now without some help. So that was a little concerning to us, so I wanted to bring that up.
Commissioner Blankenhorn?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. The 1/8 tax is for indigent patient care only. And so it's not for healthcare in general. It could not be used for anything other than to try and make up the difference for Holy Cross Hospital for indigent patient care. We actually have two separate 1/8 gross receipts tax that are both dedicated solely for the purpose of indigent healthcare. And so we already have sufficient amount to meet the 1/12th under the new safety net pool law, plus our own, our own indigent care costs, which go with ambulance service and the detention center mostly. And we'll still have a bit of a surplus from that, which is why we are asking the public to consider repeal of that second 1/8. As it stands now, I think there's about $800,000 in that account that has to be spent on indigent patient care. If the election is successful and the repeal takes place, by that time, there'll be about 1.5 million in that account that will still have to be spent for indigent patient care. Now, Mr. Rosenbloom can correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that under the new state laws, the hospital cannot accumulate a surplus for indigent patient care. The most that they can do is collect their outstanding bills on indigent patient care. And so it just seemed to us that there was no place else to put that money, at least as far as Holy Cross Hospital goes. I think we are optimistic that there'll be a series of proposals within the community that will help us spend that money wisely, and of course, we'll do so in consultation with THS. And if it was general healthcare, then I would see, I would see the point, but unfortunately, it isn't. And the other thing is, the last, the last thing about it is that if we do repeal it, we do intend to reinstate a 1/8 tax for general purposes, to maintain our healthy budget. And of course, that will give us some leeway to help the hospital going forward if need be. So I hope that that's helpful.
Thank you.
Mr. Malone, any other thoughts?
I think that Commissioner Blankenhorn fairly well covered it. It's, it's, his final comments about the idea of basically repurposing it so it's not limited to just indigent healthcare, but can be allocated for general purposes. And that would allow the county commission to decide if they want to do that and then allocate the funds to the highest priorities. And obviously, the hospital for non-indigent care could be one of those.
Okay, thank you. And Steve actually wanted to speak.
And Steve, if you could indicate your last name as well for the record. Thank you.
My name is Steve Rosenbaum. I'm a resident of Rancho, and currently CFO at the hospital, and as Anna mentioned, also interim CEO at the hospital, or Taos Health Systems. Thank you, Commissioner Blankenhorn, for that clarification. We weren't aware that that was strictly for indigent funding. And I did have distributed to you before the meeting a joint press release from the New Mexico Hospital Association and Taos Health Systems regarding the safety net care pool funding. It was unrelated, this press release is really unrelated to the previous discussion about that repeal of the tax. It just happened to come at the same time, coincidentally. I'm not going to read the entire press release, but I did want to highlight a couple of points. The hospitals across the state, the sole community hospitals, of which there are 28, plus the University of New Mexico, which is the teaching hospital, participate in the safety net care pool funding. And we really appreciate the state government, the legislature, and the counties for supporting their sole community hospitals and keeping this supplemental payment alive. It is different than the sole community provider payments that occurred previous to this year. The funding of the program is much different, and how we collect those funds is much different. By the end of this year, Holy Cross will have received probably over $7 million in total funding. I won't have an exact number until the end of the year because part of the funding is an enhanced rate for the Medicaid inpatients that we see. So until we know how many patients we actually had, we won't have those final numbers. But it would, it will be in the $7 million range. And for that funding that we received, the county contributed just under half a million dollars. So that's a pretty good return, and it's a much different structure than was previously in place under the sole community provider program. We don't know the specific funding levels yet for 2015. That'll be determined at the legislative sessions next spring. But we do appreciate the county's support going forward.
Ms. Chairman?
Commissioner?
Thanks, Steve, for that presentation. I just wanted to reiterate how good of a deal this has been for Taos County. It's a half a million dollar investment from the county that results in $7 million to our hospital. And prior to this, it was a three-to-one match. That was the best we would do, and we ended up actually putting in 1.5 million as a county for 4.5. So 1.5 to 4.5, 5 to 14 is just so much better. And so I think it's important for us to encourage our legislators to, well, first to thank them for what they passed and encourage them to maintain the formula going forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Sir, go ahead and come forward. Good morning, and state your name for the record.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name's Bruce Weatherby, and I work with District 1199, the nurses and hospital workers at Holy Cross Hospital. I'm encouraged to hear, and actually, one of the reasons I was asked to come was to support the concerns the hospital has about what's going to happen with that money. Because we, as you know, our folks are the front line for the hospital. And they're concerned that regardless of, well, we came here for two reasons. One was the support, and the other was to ask to be on the agenda, which we had tried to get on for this agenda, to make a presentation about our concerns about the financial conditions of the hospital. We don't believe they're out of the woods yet. And I'm encouraged by what Commissioner Blankenhorn described as that money being put into a fund that, for general purposes, which will allow maybe, if necessary, access for other hospital needs because we do think they're going to need them. And we would like to make, if we could possibly, Mr. Chairman, get on the agenda for about 20 minutes, your next meeting, we'll make that presentation. And we do appreciate that the acting or interim CEO is still here. We know that it's been, it's been a struggle to having essentially three different CEOs in the last several, four or five months. It's good that he's, we have some consistency there. We are concerned about some other things that will be part of that presentation, which we'll bring up. It's finances, it's planning, it's, it's also, we're encouraged to hear that UNM is involved. We'd like to know more about that, and we think that that should. I know the previous COO said at a meeting here that UNMH had said, had put a restriction on, on, or basically kept the negotiations private. And it's, I'm paraphrasing what he said, but our concern is that's a public institution as we feel Holy Cross Hospital is essentially a public institution also. And we'd like, we think the public, that you all as the real, the party really responsible for delivering healthcare and hospital care under the state law, are made aware of what's going on before it's just announced that it's happened. And I think we would encourage the hospital to share those details. And we are reaching out to UNMH as well to make sure that they, as a public institution funded by, you know, state of New Mexico money, share that with the public. With that, if we could get some acknowledgement that we could be on at the next meeting, we'd appreciate it very much.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Go ahead and come forward.
Good morning. Jean Green. I've been told that a citizen cannot get up here and speak to you at a public meeting about the airport at this time. Is that correct?
Mr. Malone?
Mr. Chairman, there's currently an application pending with the planning department that's been provided by the town of Taos that starts the administrative process. And there is a concept called ex parte communication, which is talking to the potential decision-makers without the other party present. And ex parte communication would interfere with the process and create the possibility of a court challenge depending upon who wins or loses. At this point, we don't know what the decision of the planning director is going to be, but the process provides for appeals of that decision initially to the planning commission and then to the Board of County Commissioners. And so speaking to the Board of County Commissioners without going through the process would be potentially an ex parte communication that a court could ultimately decide had poisoned the entire process. And I just strongly recommend that the commission not allow that potential poisoning of the process to take place.
So that, so in other words, since there's an administrative review and process, a citizen cannot, cannot speak on this process even if there are no public hearings?
Everything that I've just said is yes to that question. And there will be public hearings if there is an appeal, and I'll be happy, Mr. Chairman, if it would be helpful to the folks that are present that are concerned with this issue to describe the appeals process in a little bit more detail. But the answer is again, I strongly recommend to the commission that it would run a serious risk of creating a court challenge to the process, and that could act to the detriment of whoever ultimately prevails. Mr. Chairman, would you like me to explain the administrative process?
Please.
Okay. So under the land use code, public projects start as an administrative permit application, which is what the town has currently filed with the county. An administrative permit application is decided by the planning director. There is provision for public comment in written form in that proceeding.
However, it's only for the people who were notified?
That is incorrect.
Oh.
That is incorrect. And let me, let me just, I don't know if that comes from what you read in the paper, but the paper incorrectly reported what the land use regulations provide. Public comment is the entire public. The entire public is entitled to file written comments with the planning director, and the planning director will take those comments into account in deciding whether to approve or deny, or approve with conditions, the town's application. Once that decision is made, then there is a 30-day period in which an appeal can be filed with the planning commission. The planning commission considers that appeal de novo. That's just a Latin term that the law uses. It decides the issue fresh. It doesn't take into account what the planning director's decision was. It decides the issue fresh. That level would involve public hearings, much like that, this, in this chamber, where the public would be entitled to comment at a public hearing. Then the planning commission makes a decision. The planning commission decision is also subject to appeal during a 30-day period, and that appeal would go to the Board of County Commissioners. Again, that process would involve public hearings, so there is an elaborate process. It's not one that stops with the planning director. And there's more than adequate provision for public input initially in written form, and later, if there are appeals, to the planning commission or the Board of County Commissioners in verbal form, or verbal and written form from the podium, much like you're sitting here today. But because of the concern about ex parte communication, again, I want to reemphasize to the commission that I think that it would be setting up a situation where the entire process would be challengeable in court if we allowed ex parte participation at this time. And so I want to see that the process is protected. I want to see that the, both, all parties, people who are in favor of the airport expansion, people who are opposed to the airport expansion, have their fair say, and have say in a process that is not then overturned by a court decision because there was ex parte communication.
Okay. I want to, I also want to protect that process. I have, my-
Mr. Chairman, I think it's very important that we not continue with commentary about the airport at this time. I think we've given a complete explanation to the public about the reason for that, and hopefully, they've learned about the process and will have confidence that it'll go forward and be even-handed and give everybody the opportunity to be heard.
Thank you, Mr. Malone. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Sir?
Chairman and Commissioners, my name is Ken Manning. I'm a resident of Taos. Wanted to take a couple of minutes of your time this morning to talk about economic development and planning. No secret that Taos area has been struggling economically the last few years. And appropriately, this commission and others have devoted a lot of attention and energy to figure out how to get things back on the tracks. I was very pleased to watch on Channel 22 a few weeks ago, a report from some of the consultants about some of the paths forward. How do you attract some high-tech activity? How do you use nature tourism to improve the economic situation? I think there's two things going on right now that could have a big influence going forward on economic activity here. Those two being the Taos Ski Valley improvements and the other kind of companion to that being the airport expansion. Mr. Bacon spending millions of dollars-
Hold on, Mr. Chairman. Hold on a second, Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Again.
I'm not going to talk about the airport.
Okay. Very good.
That's, that's, that's up there at 20,000 feet.
Okay. Good enough. Just wanted to make sure.
Mr. Bacon's spending a lot of money, and that's happening right now at the Ski Valley, I think has the potential to bring people to Taos, initially as tourists, that have a lot more money than probably anyone in this room does. Some people resent that. I look at that as something that says, these are people that have the potential to create jobs. They have the potential to fund startups. They have the potential to relocate a business to Taos. They have the potential to invest in the community, not just build another fancy home. Their impression when they come to Taos is going to be, what do they see on the north side? What do they see in El Prado? What do they see in Arroyo Seco? They'll go out to the bridge. They'll go out to the earthships. That's going to be what they look at and see. Is this the legendary Taos that has the charm, the magical aspects that I've heard about? Now, there's no guarantee that they're going to bring money to town, but if they come out here and they see a Dollar General on the road to the Ski Valley like we've got on the south side, I would speculate they're going to say, well, gee, this is too bad. Taos had charm. It had mysticism. But the city fathers, for whatever reason, didn't choose to protect that. I would suggest you have a role in protecting that. And I think this is the time for you to consider moving forward in that regard. I say that because I spent a lot of time in the last couple of years reviewing drafts of the land use regs that the commission ultimately adopted. In those regs were concepts that I thought extremely praiseworthy. That being the highway overlay districts, the historic village overlays. Those were reduced in the final draft from about 10 pages to about half a page. I was told that they weren't ready for prime time yet. I think as the, as the economy recovers, if something is in place that ensures that we've protected key highway corridors, then economic development is going to be supported by that and not impeded by that. My experience over the decades has been, you're going to be much more effective in implementing planning initiatives before the economy picks up ahead of steam. Once things start moving, you've got speculators, you've got developers that are going to be in your face, big time, on trying to put anything in place that slows them down. That's why I've come today to say, how and when is the process to start to implement and bring to fruition? The overlay zones going to get rolling.
Thank you for that advice.
Mr. Chairman.
Tom.
Thanks. Ken, you're absolutely right. You know, the process has already begun. Of course, the area that you talk about is Upper Colonius. They have a very good draft of an overlay in place. I've been to a meeting with some of the people from that neighborhood and the Planning Department. And the specific corridor that you're talking about, under the proposed overlay, does in fact protect that area against large retail. So, I think you'll be pleased with that when those come out. Planning Department has got their hands full, and so it's just a matter of them working through their end of it. But the process has already begun. And the key was not in the language that was retracted. The key is in the overlays. And, you know, we have the law in place to allow that to occur.
Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead.
Hi, Lawrence Baker. Can I just sort of pile on there? I wanted to read you something that a travel writer wrote recently for the LA Times, Booth Moore. Did any of you see that article? Well, I just want to read it, just a sentence or two sentences. "As I approached Taos on New Mexico 68, it wasn't the beauty that first struck me, but the string of fast food restaurants and the Walmart. Clearly, getting off the grid wasn't going to be easy." So, the south side of town, the gateway to the south side of town is pretty bad. I know you guys don't have anything to do above SDAAS. Below SDAAS is your bag, right? Maybe you can think of something to make that more attractive. But the north side of town, you really are going to have to start thinking about preserving that. That's going to be two gateways, 522 and 64. And then, of course, you just talked about 150, which I think you're all pretty much on board to preserve. So, I just want, when you have things come before you from the Planning Department, and there are these ugly buildings, you really need to think about that. And if it takes, I don't know what it takes to preserve that view, but I think you really need to put that into the land use codes. You say that redacting all of that, those 30 pages, didn't hurt, but I think it did. Cautionary tales, fellas.
I guess I have to say, I mean, I, the other side of the story is how, where would people eat? How would, I mean, what do we do as far as buying clothing? Do they go into town and buy it in the shops? What would Taos do without stores if we, if we got rid of all of them?
I think-
Does she indicate any of that in the, in the article?
No. The article was actually about living off the grid. That was, and the charm, that was actually, this guy came to town thinking that, I mean, he was going to stay out at the earthships, which he did. And, but he was kind of assuming that all of Taos was sort of like that. And he got into town, and he saw Wendy's and Subway and Dollar General. You know, he saw all these chains that are, he sees in every place he goes to.
Right.
So, I'm not, now, mind you, I'm not talking about not having any chains, although they do destroy local entrepreneurship. I mean, that's obvious. But I'm talking about how it's packaged, the building. I mean, you could take a Dollar General and you could put it in an attractive building, and you can landscape it, and you can make it look like Taos. But what's been done in the last few years is, is not that. So, that's not what I'm talking about. I am not anti-business.
Right.
So.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Thilke.
Stephen.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Good morning, Mr. Thilke.
Good morning, gentlemen. You probably know why I'm here. I think it's obvious to everyone that the requests for speed bumps is not going to stop. And I'd like to offer a reminder that you've already approved 12 speed bumps for ranchitos that hasn't yet been removed or rescinded. And so, all these requests that are continuing, do they supersede that? And I think we can all agree that speeding is a law enforcement issue. And if we're going to solve a law enforcement issue by speed bumps, then maybe we ought to take, I would like to see it being a budgetary item. So, so it's something that's projectable, it's something that's accountable. And either, either the funds for those speed bumps comes off the sheriff's budget and moved over to the road department, or, but, you know, I think this is something that, that should be looked at. I don't like to use that word "should." Sorry about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thilke. Stephen.
Good morning. You weren't present at the previous meeting on 7 October, Mr. Blankenhorn. I said at that time you approached me during a break in the September 2 meeting to indicate your strong disagreement. My citizens' concerns, comments regarding tired and weary wealthy retreaters, and the request by Black Interest Limited Partnership Blackstone Ranch for major development expansion. In response to my concerns, I said earlier this month, you had, quote, asked, "What about being welcoming and inclusive? What about the agricultural land being preserved as open space at Blackstone Ranch?" I countered such preservation need only be voluntary, according to the recently passed Land Use Regulations Ordinance 2014-01, Section 5.3.4, agriculture, wetland, and open space, I'm quoting now, voluntary. Part A, AP designation, agriculture, wetland, and open space, in parentheses, voluntary purpose. And I'm quoting now from the regulations. "The AP zoning cannot be imposed by the county, but can only be granted by the county commission to those property owners voluntarily requesting such status." That's not, that's simply not true, Mr. Blankenhorn. I said it would be best to conduct a survey and inventory of resident county soils and soil properties that serves the guide to agricultural preservation requirements. Much of the work is already accomplished and available, merely awaiting consultation and reference. It's the Soil Survey of Taos County and parts of Rio Grande and Mora Counties, New Mexico. I wanted, I went on to say such surveys and inventories were used successfully in other communities, and that I had lived in such a place, Oregon. Mr. Blankenhorn replied, quote, "The economics were different, that this was not Oregon. Just look at the Columbia River." He said he had inserted the word voluntary in the language of the land use regulations in light of the economics of this community, that the economic facts don't lie. He didn't explain or elaborate upon just what those economic facts are. As for facts, Mr. Blankenhorn, the researched and published facts of soil and water biology and chemistry are simply undeniable and cannot, must not be ignored in guiding the sustainable future of this community. I don't know what economic facts in the Columbia River have to do with conducting or preventing a scientifically and factually based survey and inventory of soils and soil properties that would then serve as the proper guide for the preservation of an agriculturally viable landscape, an agriculturally viable community, a community of history, tradition, and culture that has survived and thrived for centuries, for countless generations. This longstanding and venerable history, tradition, and culture of a viable agricultural landscape now finds itself facing an onslaught of commodification and gentrification exemplified and embodied in the single word voluntary. In 2008, I went on to say, Community by Design presented a draft Sustainable Land Use Code, which included protection of irrigated agricultural lands in Taos County. That code said agricultural land is defined as, quote, "A consolidated area set aside as permanent agricultural land." Irrigated agricultural land is further defined as those lands identified by hydrographic survey that are described as having historically been used for irrigated agriculture, or those lands that are shown to be irrigated by asachia, mitigation wells or groundwater pumped irrigation systems in the records of the Asachia Association and Office of the State Engineer. In said Sustainable Code, Section D, Irrigated Agricultural Lands in Asachia Estates, the purpose of this section is to protect and preserve the agricultural lands, the asachia systems, and the ground and surface water resources of Taos County by establishing criteria for review and approval of development, subdivisions, or division of land located within irrigated agricultural lands. Some of the stated specific purposes of the irrigated agricultural lands in Asachia's section are, quote, "To promote the clustering of lots, homes, and structures on irrigated agricultural land in order to protect agricultural uses and cultural values in Taos County while accommodating new development. To promote the conservation and efficiency of the water resources of Taos County for sustained and beneficial use, and maintain the viability and health of the historic asachia system. To require more compact development of irrigated agricultural land set aside to protect the historic settlement patterns and important visual qualities which make Taos County a special place to live, and to protect the agricultural uses from the negative impacts of development and from uses that are not compatible with irrigated agriculture. As for being welcoming and inclusive, Mr. Blankenhorn, among the very first to be invited to the table and heard regarding the use of this land, this landscape, this watershed, this dowry of community livelihood, community wealth, and community rights should be the very voices of this particular land, landscape, and watershed, embodying what the very much alive soil and water resources tell us we, this community, should be doing, not in some artifice of human invention such as land use regulations and neighborhood associations. The first and fundamental voice is the enlightened and instructive voice of land and water, the landscape, followed closely by the voices of history, culture, and tradition. Such would be a community, a landscape, a watershed, an economics of affection, respect, and restraint, not in economics of commodification and gentrification, not in economics of derivative and speculative profiteering, not in economics of unenlightened and unregulated self-interest. I wonder, Mr. Blankenhorn, if you could tell us, what are the economic facts? Rio Grande County has agricultural protections in place. I don't know exactly what they are, but maybe because they're a little to the west of us and closer to the Columbia River, maybe that has something to do with it. So, maybe if you could elaborate on that a bit. In the Taos Regional Water Plan, Section 8.5, Protect Agriculture, says, "Continuation of a viable local agriculture sector will benefit the region by providing local food crops, aesthetic open spaces, and a sense of community." Matt Romero, I'm quoting again, Matt Romero, who farms in Dixon and Alcalde, has said that with the right plan, farmers can make a good living in agriculture. Quote, "It is possible to grow $40,000 to $50,000 worth of vegetables on an acre of land." John Reed, again, I'm quoting, professor emeritus at the University of Missouri and author of Sustainable Capitalism: A Matter of Common Sense, gives six strategies for developing a productive farm. I'll just mention a couple of them. "Focused on quality, nutrition, and safety, a rapidly growing, environmentally conscious food market is reflected in the growing popularity of organic foods. Related growth in a socially conscious market is reflected in the current explosion and popularity of local foods. Focused on ecological, social, and economic sustainability, the new food culture is not just concerned about pesticides, growth hormones, and genetically modified organisms. They are concerned about the impacts of their food decisions on the natural environment, on the treatment of farmers and food industry workers, and on who benefits from the processes of food production and who pays the cost. Focused on developing personal relationships with their customers." Lastly, at the land use meeting in June, Commissioner Sanchez asked of you, "Did you have part in this document, working on it?" And you replied, "Yes, I absolutely did, and I'm proud of the work that we actually did up in Arroyo Seco." We ended up coming up with 40 suggestions that were incorporated in the document. I wonder if you could provide to this community what those 40 suggestions were? Thank you.
Okay. You know, you've asked that before, and I've said before, it was widely distributed, and, you know, those 40 suggestions are available. I'll see that I can get you a particular copy. We've had this discussion before. Everything in the code, both the subdivision code and the land use regulations, support agricultural development to the extent that anybody wants to-
Wants?
Yeah. Anybody who wants to use their property and develop it agriculture, we'll have my full support, we'll have this board's full support, has the land use regulations' full support. We all recognize that the asachia system and that the historical, cultural aspects of agricultural development are important to this community. Not only that, but the asachia system helps to recharge the aquifer. We all get that, and it's all part of our deal. But we don't, what we don't get is that we can say, "You own this property, you be a farmer. You own this property, you be a farmer." We don't have that authority. I know that's something that you would like to do. But anyway, we are really kind of running late, and so we probably should have this discussion in private.
No, not in private. You don't know what I want. And for you to say that it can be voluntary, that you can't impose that, is not right. I'm sorry. Thank you.
That's it? Okay. Thank you. Okay. Next. Mark.
Chairman Romero, Commissioners, I have some information here that I received this morning, could have gotten to you sooner, could have put in your pocket, but just for your review, regarding the Old County Courthouse ramp and B-gas in the back. It's been really the same. Just get this out to you.
Thank you, Mark.
For your review, consideration, and further data.
Thank you, Mark, for moving forward with this. I know I had talked to our manager about it a few months ago. You have the right to talk a little bit about it.
I just wanted to-
Share some thoughts.
I just met with a CES vendor who approached me on some other projects I'm looking at, and I took him to the Old County Courthouse. The front page there is the view of the backside of the building, which is the ADA ramp we're looking at. And if you flip the page, it shows the front of the Old County Courthouse, where we have some rotting B-gas that we need to make more appealing. This is just the preliminary drawings that they emailed to me. There's no cost to fix to that. I'll get the price at a later date. I'll get the price at a later date, but I did want to share this with you, let you know we're moving forward and just give you a rendition of what we're looking at.
I certainly appreciate that. And with regards to the ramp, obviously, it's ADA, it makes the courthouse, the mural room ADA accessible. Is it wood or is it constructed out of wrought iron?
Right now, we have wood there.
Okay.
Because the majority of the products on the outer lining areas of the plaza are all wood. We could look at wrought iron. Wrought iron will probably be a little more costly, but it will probably last longer. But what you have in front of you is all wood.
Okay. Thank you.
We could talk about this at a later date. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll go ahead and move forward with the rest of the agenda today. We'll move on to the minutes. Item 6 of October 7, 2014. This is a regular meeting. Is there a motion?
No move, Mr. Chairman.
I'll go ahead and second. Madam Clerk?
I wasn't present, abstain.
Do I have a question?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Yes, okay. We'll move on to item 7, Awards and Recognitions, a presentation of a proclamation to the Taos County Economic Development Corporation proclaiming November 10 through the 16th, 2014, as Taos County Economic Development Corporation Week. Mr. Haddamio?
Whereas Taos County Economic Development Corporation has been serving Taos County, been serving the greater Taos County for over 28 years by advocating for food, land, water, and the cultures of the peoples of northern New Mexico. And whereas Taos County Economic Development Corporation has provided free training in food safety and USDA regulations to the community of Taos County and helped incubate hundreds of small businesses in arts, manufacturing, and food. And whereas hundreds of people from Taos County community have benefited from using TCEDC's 5,000-square-foot commercial USDA-approved kitchen to create added-value agricultural products to help support their families. And whereas the Mobile Montanza has provided a humane USDA-certified program to ensure healthy meat in the community and help land-based people hold on to their land and traditional life ways. And whereas every year in the fall of Taos, in the fall, Taos County Economic Development Corporation holds an event to celebrate harvest. And whereas this year, this will be the first annual week-long collaborative fall festival Thanksgiving for food, land, water, and the cultures of the peoples of northern New Mexico celebration. Now therefore, it be resolved that the Taos County Board of Commissioners in recognition of the Taos County Economic Development Corporation do hereby proclaim November 10 through the 16th, 2014, as Taos County Economic Development Corporation Week and presented this 21st day of October, 2014. Chairman, the delegation from TCEDC is in Atlee, so they weren't able to attend, so we'll give this proclamation to either yourself or Commissioner Brony to present at their meeting.
Thank you very much, Mr. Haddamio. And Commissioners, as the public I'm sure knows, both Commissioner Mayor Brony and myself are, serve on the Board of Taos County Economic Development Corporation. And the county, I can say, has definitely participated in the success of Taos County Economic Development Corporation in many ways. From the food kitchen and the processing center to the Mobile Montanza, Taos County shares ownership of these structures and the process in which has allowed for really wonderful, awesome economic development and the creation of small businesses in Taos County. And so we're very proud of that participation in that co-ownership of the things that come out of Taos County Economic Development Corporation. Commissioner Brony?
And I want to echo those sentiments, Commissioner, and you know, this is one of those entities that continue to foster relationships with a number of small businesses that have started up. They offered incubator services, and we continue to foster some of the, and we talk about economic development. They truly have fostered economic development because we have about 25 new businesses within the last couple of years that have been generated through that entity. So Commissioner and our fellow constituents here in our community, this is one of those organizations that continue to create economic development within our community, and we hope that we can appreciate them. You know, they've gone through some tough times, and we want to make sure that this business stays within our community, fostering those small businesses that want to become bigger businesses that we can foster within our community. We talk, you know, we talk about small businesses that really generate income in our community, pays GRTs, that help fund our roads, help fund all the other projects that we have in our community. So we want to make sure that this is one of those opportunities that we have during this week to actually step out and actually help them. I know there will be a number of fundraisers during this week, and we'd hope that a lot of the community would step up and help in this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Brony. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, also, how does anybody get any information on small business, starting your own small business? Who would we contact?
Taos County Economic Development Corporation, 758-8731. You can talk to Patty or Terry, and they will guide you to the people that have assisted for so many years in doing so.
And Mr. Sanchez, I just want to give you another opportunity, is the TENS. The TENS group is one of those organizations that really fosters some of these small businesses, give you ideas, possible funding sources, that type of thing, and they do have, I believe, I can't, I think they meet on the first, third Wednesday of every month at the Old County Courthouse.
And Commissioner, would you happen to have a number for those folks?
I don't, I do, but I'll get it for you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Okay. We have to have a motion. Did we do a motion with regards to this proclamation?
So moved.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Blankenhorn?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, very good. We'll move on to item 8. This is Presentations, Presentation by the Trust for Public Lands on Green Printing, a mapping tool that helps communities prioritize conservation goals based on community values. We have Mr. Brice Robertson, Director of Conservation Vision, Mr. Jacob Caldwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, Mr. Haddamio, Mr. Malone, thank you for having me to introduce this. I'll keep it really brief. I think this morning's been, of course, another fascinating glimpse into the decisions that you're asked to make and the pressures you're under as Commissioners. One thing I wanted to introduce to you in bringing up Brice Robertson is a potential tool to help you make those decisions in the future and guide them. Before I do that, though, I want to make clear that the Trust for Public Lands didn't ask to make this presentation. This is something that I sort of helped coordinate only because the Trust for Public Lands, which is a nonprofit entity that has offices throughout the nation and really does quite comprehensive and impressive conservation work specializing in the acquisition of open space and the conveyance of that open space to public ownership. Some examples of the work they've done in Taos County include the Overlook Area, Yoot Mountain, and most recently the Miranda Canyon acquisition. I've had the pleasure of working with members of the Santa Fe Office of the Trust for Public Lands more and more recently, and it's because of that work that it occurred to me that in subsequent conversations with members of the commission and members of the planning staff, that getting an idea of some of the tools that are offered, not just by Public Land, Trust for Public Lands, but in general, that help overlay the technology of GIS mapping with community values to help guide decisions, might be worth presenting. And that's really the reason that this presentation is being made. We're very lucky in Taos to have the Santa Fe Office of the Trust for Public Lands housing their nationwide GIS director in the form of Brice Robertson. And once again, you know, it's something that maybe we can take advantage of in developing a way to shape these decisions as you move forward. To be clear, I have no affiliation with the Trust for Public Lands, nor are they with me. This is just something that kind of came about through the course of conversations about how we continue to help make decisions, decisions, of course, which should always be based on what the community wants and what the community values. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Brice. With Brice, incidentally, is Greg Heiner. Greg Heiner is a senior project manager for TPL, and Greg worked most recently on the Miranda Canyon project. So Brice, thanks so much for coming. Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. I've got a short PowerPoint presentation here that I think you'll see on your screens there, but I am going to reference this one up here, so you can go to the next slide. And just to be clear, GIS stands for Geographic Information Systems. It's a sophisticated mapping and analytical software. You use it here in the county. And we head up all the GIS work for all of the offices for the Trust for Public Land across the country and all the different communities that we work in. And I like to say that we work from the main streets to the mountaintops, you know, all different types of communities. And really, our, this is our mission statement, but we conserve land for people and communities. Next slide. So many of you know about the Trust for Public Land through our transaction staff, that's Greg Heiner, and through the project work that we do on the ground, but it's really this combination of services that makes us so successful with our communities. And I head up our Conservation Vision and GIS program. That's all about helping communities identify what's important for conservation and to help them protect those places that they love. We also have a Conservation Finance, can you go back one? Sorry. Conservation Finance Program. It's great to have a plan, but you have to pay for the plan, right? And so we help communities identify existing funding or create new funding to actually implement the plan and do the transaction work, conservation transaction work on the ground. We have a Parks Design and Development Program so that we can actually come in through a community-driven process. Once the land is procured, let the community help define what that park or open space would look like. And a Research and Education Team. And you can see here our GIS and planning program. We've won several international awards over the years. Next slide. This map shows, it's a little hard to see, but it shows the scale of the work that we do. For green printing in particular, we do work all over the country from the county scale all the way out to watersheds, and in some cases even at a state level. Next slide. These are all of the projects the Trust for Public Land has completed across the country over the last 42 years. You can see the point locations here. There's a lot up in the Santa Fe Taos area there in New Mexico. And we've actually mapped all of these projects down to the tax parcel level so we can talk about who we're serving, and we can start to talk about metrics around land conservation. Next slide. So this is a map of New Mexico. Again, a little hard to see on these screens, but it's got all of those point locations of the projects that the Trust for Public Land has completed. Again, a lot up here in Taos County. Next slide. So what I'm going to focus on today is green printing. We do offer a variety of services, services ranging from doing a park equity analysis to show who has access to parks and who doesn't within a community. But green printing is our community-driven conservation plan, and it's all about bringing the community together to identify what's important to conserve. Next slide. So there are four main steps to a green print. The first is constituency building, so making sure you have all the right people at the table through the green print process to make sure that, you know, this plan that's going to be created actually gets implemented and can be integrated into the planning work that you're doing, things like master plans and those types of planning work. The second step is using GIS technology to actually map out what these priorities look like across the landscape and to really stack them up, you know, create a sandwich, for lack of a better description, of how those things stack up on the landscape so you can see where you're going to get the best value for your conservation dollars. The Conservation Finance team can come in and help, like I mentioned, to identify funding, and then we create an action plan. Next slide. The very first thing that we do for a green print is understand what planning work has been done because we do not want to come in and reinvent the wheel. So we do what's called a current conditions analysis. We scan all the planning documents that have been created to date. We interview people. We figure out, you know, where might the gaps be, what hasn't been, what hasn't been covered to date related in conservation plans. Next slide. And then we pull together a technical advisory team. And so, you know, we're not the experts in water quality, for example, in Taos County or agricultural issues. And so if those are two things that are important for the community for land conservation, we bring together a local technical advisory team and experts in those different fields that will help us identify the different data sources that are available to represent those different factors and also help us figure out how we're going to translate that data through the modeling process. Moving? There we go. So the first step, we bring the stakeholders together in the community to identify those goals. We work with the technical advisory team to associate data and assemble data to represent those goals. And then this is a nice little example of how we bring all those layers together, and if you go to the next slide, into one composite map. And so you can see the water quality, trail connections, park equity, wildlife protection. Those are examples of some goals that the community came up with that they were concerned about for land protection. And then we roll all those up into one composite map so you can see where all of those things overlay on the landscape. And those percentages along the side there, that's where the community and the stakeholders get the chance to put a value on each one of those. And by weighting each one of these goals, and those weights can change year to year. So when we do a green print, we deliver the product to the county so that you have the chance to update that internally year to year. In this case, you might have money for wildlife protection that you need to spend over the next year or two. So you might want to rank wildlife protection higher, in this case, than other things. And two years from now, you might have money from another source, so you can change those weightings. Next slide. We've also done some innovative creation around stakeholder engagement. We've all been to meetings where you get the thumbs up, thumbs down, you like something, you don't. In some cases, we put maps around the wall, on the walls, and give people dots, and they walk around during a break and put dots on maps that represent things that they really care about. And those things take time. We have to take time away from our public meetings for our facilitators to count up the dots and do some calculations. If you go to the next slide, we found a keypad voting system that we were able to tie directly into the GIS software. So now when people come into public meetings, they get a keypad, and they can actually vote on these goals. We can click a few buttons in the GIS software, and the maps update automatically. So this has really taken us more quickly toward discussion about values, data, and how their preferences are actually affecting what's going to show up as high priority on the maps. Next slide. So the first part of the green print is to really do a county-wide analysis, you know, where are the most important things to protect? And then the second piece is actually taking it down to the parcel level. And we do a parcel prioritization which looks at those green print results, you know, where are your highest values stacking up on the landscape? And this is where you can start to look at acquisition criteria, like is a property adjacent to already protected land? What's the size of the property? The assessed value? Is there a willing seller? Because we only deal with willing landowners here in this case. Next slide. And we've created many tools also that allow you in the GIS desktop environment, so your GIS analysts and planners can do this, but also you can use these tools through online web mapping sites where you can click on web mapping sites, where you can click on properties, and it gives you a parcel profile report that tells you exactly why that property scored high for conservation, medium, or low. And it really digs into the details of the data. So, for example, it would tell you, you know, this property is adjacent to already protected lands, it's important for agriculture for these reasons, and it's important for recreation because it provides hunting access. So all those different goals and criteria that came out of the green print process, you can see in these parcel profile reports. Next slide. So I'm going to jump in now to a specific example of a project we did in Garfield County, Colorado. That's where Glenwood Springs is located. It's a similar size, and it has a similar makeup to Taos. And so this is what we did there. We, and one thing I want to say about the green print process is it can be, we've created a framework, but it's modified for every community that we work in. And so this will show you some of those modifications for Garfield County. So the first thing we did was community outreach, identified those goals. We did the GIS mapping to show those priorities, and then we determined that action plan, what those next steps are going to be. Next slide. These were the goals that the stakeholders and community from Garfield County came up with. They wanted to preserve wildlife habitat and native plants, protect their water resources, restore impaired waters, conserve working ranches and farms, create open land buffers, preserve and enhance recreation and tourism opportunities, and enhance trail systems. Next slide. So we meet with the stakeholders and the community, and we really drill down into each one of those overarching goals, and we say, well, what's important about conserving working ranches and farms in Taos? And in Garfield's example, they came up with all of these different things, like preserving active ranching and farming properties, and preserving properties that have productive farmland soils. They wanted to enhance their trail systems, make sure their trail systems are connected, and, you know, getting people to the right places through, using walking or biking modes. Next slide. So with each one of these overarching goals, we come up with a priority map. And in this case, the dark purples are showing the highest priority areas for those individual goals. And if you click one more time, then we bring all of those up together into an overarching composite map. So again, the darker purples, those are where you're going to get your highest value for your conservation dollars on the ground. Next slide. So you get your highest value for your money. It provides a strategic allocation of resources, and it's really becomes a unified focus for the county. We make sure, you know, that we have everybody at the table, both on the stakeholder side, and we do a lot of community outreach and get the community involved in this process so that everybody's behind this conservation plan. Next slide. So in Garfield, we equally weighted all the goals. And we came up with one scenario, which you'll see on the next map here. And then we did something a little different here, so if you go to the next slide. We also did a public opinion poll. And we took those results, and we created an overall priority map, which is on the next slide. They look somewhat similar, but there are some differences. So when you start to zoom down into those areas, you can see how the different values, based from those different preferences, affect the map. And then if you go to the next slide, we went through the full green print process, and the stakeholders and the communities weighted each of those goals. And then on the next slide, you'll see the map result for that. So click one more time. And this shows three different scenarios, based on three different ways of looking at the data. And we had really deep discussion with the community about each one of these. And then, if you go to the next slide, you know, we were able to bring those all together into one composite map that Garfield County could use moving forward in their conservation plan and master plan process. Next slide. And in the action plan, we want to make sure that these aren't, you know, 100-page documents. These are short documents. They're anywhere from 20 to 40 pages long. They're very concise. We really want to see short-term successes, so, you know, a lot of times, a green print typically takes about a year. So we want to see some properties rise up to the top that we can start working on right away, and also set up the county or community for long-term success and conservation strategies. We want to make sure also that we're talking realistically and thinking about costs, not only with acquisition costs, but also with management costs, that these are publicly and politically supported, and that they're accomplishing multiple conservation goals. So we're not just looking at recreation, we're looking at water quality and all types of other goals. Next slide. And there are a couple ways that we can push out products to, help you push out products to your communities. I don't know if you're using story maps already, but this is an example of a map up in Montana on the right side. That's the Madison River Valley. And this shows, with the dots, conserve lands and then lands that have been restored based on certain factors. And then when you click on all those, it zooms you into the map, and you can take a tour of those properties and see pictures. So it really starts to tell the story of your conservation legacy. Next slide.
This presentation is available online?
I can give it to you, and you can make it available, certainly. And then lastly, we're pushing data out to people into the field through mobile applications, and that's becoming much more pervasive now. We all have smartphones, and we're able to push information out to the field, both for your planning staff, for your project staff, so that they can see, they can be in the field and click on a project and get that parcel profile report right on their smartphone or tablet. Next slide. So communities use green prints in different ways to contribute to master plans. They can help inform zoning layers, evaluate a land donation offer. You can type in the parcel ID number of a property, and again, get that parcel profile report to know exactly why that property might be important for conservation, and all these other ways. And also helping us to leverage state and federal dollars. You know, more and more with federal dollars in particular, you have to have a plan that's linked somehow to a federal agency's plan. And these green prints can help to do that. Next slide. So in conclusion, you know, we're not just giving you a set of static maps. We would be providing you with a decision support tool that your county planners and GIS professionals can update year to year. And it's blending community values with science. You know, we have all this data, a lot of times, and we don't really know what to do with it. A green print can really help with that. And then just to wrap up here, you know, green printing, we've seen it all across the country. It really helps people be more strategic, and I know that you work this way a lot with the planning work that you're doing, but on the conservation side of things, green prints can really help communities be more strategic and proactive about land conservation. And we would love to help if there ever comes that opportunity.
I really applaud you for the efforts that you've taken on with your organization with regards to conservation and vision.
Thank you.
I was just on a more local level with regards to the Miranda Canyon. And any ideas to what's going on at this point? If you can come forward and state your name for the record. Thank you.
I'm Greg Heiner. I'm a senior project manager with the Trust for Public Land.
Okay, and what's the word on Miranda Canyon? Is it completely, has it been completely purchased at this point by the federal government?
TPL now owns the remainder of the property. We've basically conveyed about 3,000 acres of the 5,000 acres to the U.S. Forest Service, and we will convey another, say, 1,000 in the next couple of months, and then another 1,000 next year.
So the entire transfer will be complete then, within the next year or so?
Yes, pending on the final federal budget, but that's what we're now projecting at this point, yes.
Any immediate plans for that particular area?
As far as the U.S. Forest Service is concerned, I do not know. They would put it into their management plan, and then they would have time for public input on how that land would be managed in the future.
Okay. Very good. Okay, Commissioner Sanchez.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners. Mrs. Robertson, a question here on Garfield County. You touched on a lot of water issues there. This is coming before us now, you know, in my district, water transfers. Have you ever had any of that come before you?
Yeah, we are, actually, that comes up a lot in our meetings. And since the green prints are more focused on conserving lands, we don't delve into water transfer. But we do have people potentially on staff that could help think through some of those issues. You know, a lot of things that aren't "mapable," quote-unquote, that would not go onto the maps and into the actual, the recommendations that we would make from the maps, we can still address through the action plan. You know, a lot of things need to be addressed through education, or through signage, or policy, and those things can actually go into the action plan. But as far as the mapping work, we haven't worked with transfers.
Okay. And also, Mrs. Robertson, and you correct me if I'm wrong, once that water transfer's gone, property just goes downhill, correct? Pricewise, or?
I can't comment on that, you know?
It really depends on the property. Some, in some cases, the water can be conveyed off the property, but yet, because of where it is, it still retains a very high intrinsic value because of its views or location. But in other cases, and especially if, you know, in relationship to the green print, if agricultural lands and agricultural production is a high value for the county, once you've severed the water rights from the property, then you have diminished their agricultural potential. So in that case, the value would very much diminish.
And I know water issues are very, very, it's hard to understand sometimes, you know? That's why I'm asking you these questions. Thank you so much.
Yes.
Thank you.
Chair. Mayor, I mean Commissioner.
And thank you, and thank you, Jake, for bringing this opportunity to us. You know, as we look into our community, you know, there's opportunities, I see, with this, that the town, the county, our community can work together in conservation of the, a lot of the open space that we currently have by mapping them. Also, trail systems that could be generated within our system, so people could actually walk from, you know, clear from Orosecco into town. Yeah, there's opportunities that I think this would lend itself to, you know? And the opportunities that, and possible funding that we, sources that we could look into, would allow that by actually mapping and laying the community out, because it's one of those situations that's hard within our community, is we have a lot of open space, but that open space is owned by a particular person. And it's hard to say, that's, open space has been there for 30 years, so we expect you never to build on that open space. And that's a hard thing to put on the backs of the person that owns that property, because his life might have changed, and his, you know, his financial, I guess, endeavor might have changed, and now he wants to give it to his kids. And a lot of people in our community are rich in land but poor in dollars. I think this would lend itself to a lot of those opportunities to keep those open spaces open and creating new trail systems and opportunities within the community, both town and county, jointly, because then, you know, again, these trail systems and considerations for our sequels that run from the county into the town would lend itself wonderfully. So thank you, thank you, Jake, for bringing this presentation to us.
Thank you, Commissioner. Can I make one comment? A lot of communities that we work with use sort of the flip side, or the negative of the conservation map, to help drive a development map. You know, we know these are our precious jewels that we want to protect, but since we're not going to develop that big property potentially, you know, let's work with that landowner, but let's also make sure we're picking the right places for development to happen. So I just wanted to make that comment, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
So going back again to the Miranda Canyon, with regards to that particular area, what is then the relationship between you all and the Forest Service?
You know, when we got involved in Miranda Canyon, you know, at the time, it was at the request of a previous incarnation of the commission, and also the federal delegation was asking us to get involved. So we stepped in at that point through our Conservation Transaction Team, which is, which I head up here in New Mexico. And we worked with the landowner at the time to come up with a long-term solution whereby that TPL would acquire the property in the short term. At the same time, we were working with the Forest Service, as the property acquisition was a priority for them, so that as we took on the property, they in turn would be coming behind us to acquire it from us. We acquired the property for the same value that we conveyed it onto the Forest Service. So in the case, particularly of Miranda Canyon, we were able to step in and meet a critical deadline situation in that, you know, the property was going to continue to be, the effort to develop it or parse it out into smaller parcels was going to continue. Our stepping in allowed the family a way out, and then it also allows them time for the Forest Service to get their funding together so that they could acquire the property. And just as a side, you know, obviously, as Jake had previously mentioned, Taos County has been very fortunate, in a lot of ways, to have some very significant things here preserved through federal dollars that have come in. Yoot Mountain and Taos Valley overlooking Miranda Canyon. A green print very much helps these federal dollars become more and more and more competitive in showing that there is a real county-city of value in seeing certain things preserved. So in having that green print in place, it helps argue for those federal dollars to come here and come to the county.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Blanknor.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for your work on Miranda Canyon. I think we got lucky there, and we got lucky on the acreage by the Overland Sheepskin Company and various other areas that we've been able to preserve. We might not be so lucky in the future. So what would it take for us to actually get a green print in Taos County?
Well, we should work together with your planning staff and come up with a scope of work. Green prints generally cost anywhere between $75,000 to $150,000, depending on what you want to include in the green print, how much community engagement, how many meetings. So I think that would be the first step, is to have a meeting with the planning staff and come up with that scope of work, and then we could jointly figure out how we could fund the green print here. Green prints are usually funded through a tapestry of different types of funding. Sometimes the local government will pitch in some money, and then the rest is covered by philanthropic sources. Sometimes even federal sources come into play.
Great.
We can help figure that out.
So it could be a collaboration, as far as funding is concerned, from the town and the county?
Definitely.
Possibly even the reservations in the area?
Yes, definitely. And we've done green prints with reservations around the country as well.
And how has that worked?
It's worked, it's a similar process. We're working with the council and working with the tribal members, and we basically walk through that same process that I outlined there.
When you were showing the map with all the dots of the areas that you've worked on, it's interesting to notice that there were some places, like from Oklahoma all the way up to the Dakotas, that there are absolutely no dots on them. And what is the reason for that? Nothing worth preserving? Just the interest isn't there?
That's a really good question, and we ask that often internally at the Trust for Public Land, but we've never really had offices in those areas. And I think, you know, with the population growth that we're going to see happening through the Midwest, well, you'll probably see more dots popping up there.
Right.
There are definitely things to protect there.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Next is item 8B, a presentation regarding Habitat for Humanity. You want to take a break? Hold on a second, Mr. Bruce. Motion to break, Commissioner?
Five minutes, please.
Go ahead. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Blanknor.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, we'll move on to item 8B, Presentation Regarding Habitat for Humanity of Taos Seeks Taos County Participation on the 2015 EDA Investments in Public Works and Economic Adjustment Assistance Grant. We have Ms. Cynthia Arvidson.
Yes.
And Mr. Bruce Armstrong, welcome.
Thank you for having us, Chairman Commissioners. I'm just going to give a little background on Habitat for Humanity. I don't want to assume anybody knows who we are. So Habitat for Humanity of Taos builds homes for people that are low-income. The houses aren't free. A lot of people have that misconception and think that we're perpetuating welfare. A lot of people have that misconception and think that we're perpetuating welfare by giving houses away. I've actually had people say that to me. So, um, they're not free, they're only interest-free, that's the only in, free part in it. Um, so these are people that would not normally be able to afford a home on their own under conventional methods. What's great about the program is they also go through training on budgeting, uh, home maintenance, um, first-time home buying. We want them to have a hand up. We want to change that generational poverty mindset and have that break off and have them be an important part of the community. Um, we are on our 29th house over here in Chumisa Verde. We are still looking for a partner family in Cuesta, so if anybody knows of, uh, someone that would be willing to be a partner with us in Cuesta, we have a house there. Another misconception is that we are funded by Habitat International, so when people are looking for nonprofits to, um, participate with, they think we're doing well financially, but we're just like all the other nonprofits in this town. We have to raise all of our own funds. We actually have to tithe back to Habitat International, 10% of our undesignated funds to help build globally, because it is a Christian organization. Um, so our funds right now are going to build our homes. We are not using any of the funds that come in to help with our office, as you've probably seen on Salazar. That was grant-funded that got us as far as we are now. We're about 60 or 70% completed. So, if you are a donor to us, we are not using your funds for that. We are trying to raise additional funds outside of the community to help with that. I mean, we would love the community to help us, but, um, any of the funds that are coming in currently are helping to build the houses. Um, so that's where I'm going to hand it off to Bruce, our grant guru, Bruce Armstrong.
Cynthia, really quick.
Yes.
You, you mentioned the partnership availability in Cuesta. Um, tell us a little bit more about that.
So, um, our qualifications for a partner family, um, I won't go through all of them, but they're on our website, taoshabitat.org, but they do have to be 50% below median income, um, have to live in Taos County for at least a year, um, be willing to partner with us, and when we say partner, like we have a group in, uh, this week that's here, our current partner family who works at Albertson's, Adriana Mares, uh, will be working with them, will be having lunch with them, so that's part of the partnership. They have to put in 500 hours of sweat equity before they are able to move into the home. We want 150 of that to be on the home as it's being built so that they realize, you know, what goes into, you know, having your own home, because most of them have been tenants and had landlords, you know? They're going to be responsible for this. So, that educational component's very important. Uh, with Cuesta, we did have a partner family that fell out. Um, they were not able to maintain their income, and so the house is currently built. It's a three-bedroom, two-bath. Um, we'll probably modify that. We won't make them wait 500 hours. We'll probably have them do about 250, and then let them move in, and they'll have to continue to work, um, the other 250.
So, the house is currently built, it's on a piece of land already?
Yes. Yeah, and it's very nice, got some great views. I wish, I wished I could live there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bruce?
Thank you, Commissioner Romero. Commissioner is a deputy county manager. Um, and we've been talking about economic development today, and that was the grant that Habitat got back in 2009, was a HUD Economic Development, and it was Rural Housing and Economic Development Grant, that allowed us to purchase the one-acre site on Salazar Road for the Habitat Office and the restore. Um, we're currently looking at funding the second phase of that project, even as we're trying to fund finishing off the office, but it, the second phase is a, um, nine or 10,000-square-foot restore. The restore is currently just north of the old blinking light, but this will be a, a nice new building that's going to be, uh, it supports economic development in, in a number of ways, uh, but I think primarily it allows people to buy used construction materials and appliances there and recycle those, and keeps things out of landfill, allows people who are building their own homes to get the materials they need to build it, and it, it provides a few jobs. We approached you in June, and thank you for the support we received on the, the first, sort of the draft of this proposal that we presented to the Economic Development Administration, and it's under their, uh, Public Works and Economic Adjustment Program. And, uh, so, we, we approached that as, you know, a, a test run of the partners that we had at that, that point with, uh, we've invited Taos County Economic Development Corporation, Taos Pueblo Housing, and the UNM, uh, Green Technologies Program to partner on this grant, and the intent is that Habitat's trying to bring in about $600,000, which is a big, uh, chunk of that restore cost. Um, but the, uh, the intent of the grant from the EDA is to create jobs. And so, uh, and when I spoke with, uh, the county manager a couple weeks ago, and he mentioned a project that I, I believe is still, um, under consideration by the commission, which is the old courthouse on the plaza, uh, we thought that the county might be interested in, in partnering on this, this grant proposal to help fund some of the needs over there, which I understand are handicap ramps and possibly elevator. Um, we are trying to keep the total proposal amount under a million dollars, and right now we have it right at a million dollars, and, um, we are offering, uh, you know, if the county wants to be a part of this, and we'd be able to bring those, the number of jobs that, uh, would be generated through the old courthouse incubator on the plaza, uh, that we have about $30,000 that we could, uh, put toward the county. And we're still negotiating with the partners. Everybody wants more of the pie, so, um, we don't know what it's going to finally look like, but we do have a deadline of December 13th, and we do very much want to go ahead, well, with the proposal. And so, it's sort of a invitation, uh, for the county to consider if, if that's something that, uh, you want to be a part of, but we would take the ball and, and, uh, run with it.
So, um, as far as a financial commitment from the various entities, including the county, any idea what that would be?
Um, they have, because of the Molly Cork mine closure, the, the match component is 20% instead of 50%. So, this allows, you know, for Habitat, if we're asking for 600,000, you know, we're, we've got at least 200,000 in the project already, um, but it's asking for a 20% match. So, if the, uh, if the county asked, went in for 30,000 of the grant money, county would have to put 7,500 in, um, as match, and that, um, job could be anything from, if there's a, a manager for the, you know, onsite manager for the, um, for the old courthouse or economic development people, as well as the, um, the folks coming in and a sense of how many jobs that's going to create, that would all, that would all be legitimate. But the money for the county could go toward a staff position.
Okay.
Creating a job.
You've had, um, Mr. Aramio, this conversation has, has taken place with our, our county manager, Mr. Archuleta as well?
I know Mr. Armstrong and, uh, and Mr. Archuleta have met, me and Mr. Armstrong, uh, met, uh, I mean, we had a phone call yesterday. Uh, Mr. Archuleta did ask Mr. Cordova to see if there's any funding he could identify for a possible grant match, and we had that conversation with Mr. Cordova yesterday.
So, we don't know yet, um, what that commitment would be, if anything? Okay.
So, I guess the request is, you know, take it under consideration, and I didn't know if it was something where you could give Mr. Archuleta the authority to, to partner on that, if, if, or, and I think there'll be another commission meeting or two before the proposals do.
Right, and your deadline is December 13th?
December 13th.
Okay. And so, um, I, I guess what would be really ideal, I, you know, there are a few items in today's agenda that should have been under, uh, probably, uh, a work-study session so that we can go more in-depth into them. Um, this would probably be one of them, so I, I guess maybe our request, Commissioners, should be to our, uh, manager, our assistant manager, our administration to, uh, possibly set up a, a work-study session here within the next couple of weeks, as just as quickly as possible so that this could be discussed in more detail. Okay.
Chairman? Chairman Commissioners, also Cynthia and Bruce, I want to thank you folks. I know you've been very supportive up in my district in Cuesta, and I want to thank you for that. And if I could, I'd like to give you my, my cards, because I do have some constituents up there that would probably would jump on the opportunity to have a, a house. So, give me a holler, and we'll, uh, we'll sit down, and I'll bring in some folks, and then see what we can do for those folks up in my area and, and support them with this.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
What is the phone number for Habitat for Humanity, if anybody is watching this on TV and...
It's 575-758-7827.
Very good. Thank you Cynthia and Bruce. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Commissioner? Bruce, before you leave, you said $30,000 would be available with a, with a $7,000 match? And, uh, and how would this grant, what would that money be able to be used for?
Uh, the intent, uh, is to create jobs. So, if you had a, if, if the county or the town was creating a position in conjunction with the, with the courthouse, you know, whether that's a, um, economic development person, or, um, you know, I'm not sure what, what jobs, I, I think that, um, Mr. Archule-
Job creation?
Yeah, job creation.
Okay, and, and that $7,000 is in kind, or is it cash?
Uh, that would be cash.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go on to item nine, Department Matters, Discussion, Consideration, Decisions Regarding the Tres Lomas Road in Arroyo Ando. Mr. Earl Salazar, good morning again, welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman Commissioners. I come before you to, uh, propose an estimate, cost estimate, to bring the roadway up to standards in, uh, Tres Lomas Road in Arroyo Ando. And it's a half a mile, and the width is, uh, 40 feet, and it's going to take us, uh, I went with my, uh, foreman Rick Trujillo to assess this road, and, uh, we came out with 13,300 to get it to where it needs to be.
And that would include, um, what, materials?
It would be a, a 6-inch base course over the road, and it would, uh, 939 tons of base course. It would be, uh, two 40-feet-by-18-inch culverts and some, uh, signs.
Is, is anyone here from Tres Lomas? You familiar with it, Commissioner?
Yes, I, yes I am, Chairman, thank you. Um, Earl is, is, uh, it seemed to me when I looked at it that if we used three inches of base course to fill all the crevices after you create your, uh, bar ditches, that, that would be sufficient, that six inches of, of, uh, base course would, you know, create that, that cushion at the top, but that would really get washed away in a small period of time. So, I've never been a big advocate of the six inches of base course unless you're prepping for a impervious surface, you know, a surface like asphalt or, uh, chip seal. What do you think? You think there's any way we could do this with the three inches rather than the six?
According to the foreman, he says that it, he'd rather put six inches, because as they grade it, it comes down to, after a while, you really don't have nothing, so if you start with six inches, then it's take, you know, uh, it'd be good for a, a long time instead of a few years.
So, Earl, are you finished? I'll, I'll ask again, but go ahead, uh, Commissioner. Earl, I, I just, a couple of questions for you. Has this gone through the process? Have we visited this road as far as the road viewers committee?
Uh, no, it hasn't. As a matter of fact, we've been having a lot of problems with the road viewer committees. Actually, uh, they, we've had them scheduled twice, and twice, all of them have canceled out, so, we, we got to figure out some other way to get our road committee together to, to go out and, and see some roads.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Commissioner Broner, you might recall that, uh, Mr. Johnson came before the commission in April, and then two meetings ago, it also was discussed, and then, that point, uh, the commission directed Mr. Salazar to, uh, come up with his recommendations, and I think the road viewers, I don't have the full history, but the road viewers did go out in April, and it was, correct me if I'm wrong, the road viewers recommended not, uh, taking it on as a county road, is that correct, Mr. Johnson, or did I get that?
And, and if I, if I might, uh, go ahead, Mr. Johnson, please, uh, step up, but let me, let me just, uh, help with the history here. So, we had a series of road viewer recommendations that said no to, uh, a variety of, of, uh, applications for, uh, adoption. And one of the things the board said at that time was, well, you know, one of the, the problems was that, that we found out through Mr. Malone that we had to do surveys, so all right, up front, there's another $3,000, and so, one of the things we, uh, we gave direction for was to get Mr. Chavez to go back to some of these roads that had been denied and see if the people who lived on those roads were actually willing to step up and, uh, make contributions to cover the survey costs, which has been done in this case. And, and so, once the people who lived on that road, uh, actually got the money together to, uh, provide the survey, um, then, then we brought it back to the commission. And then, I asked Mr. Salazar to, um, to give a, uh, an estimate, because we also had determined in that period that if, if we are going to adopt these roads, that the funding should come out of each district. So, um, if we get a positive vote on this today, the money that we use to upgrade this road will actually come out of my budget, uh, for next year's, uh, capital improvements. It's, it's an investment that I am absolutely willing to make, uh, because if you take a look at this map here, you'll see that there's about 40 families that have no other way out except through this road. We already maintain right up, uh, to this road, and it, and it would not be, uh, any extra travel time for us to send the grader down it. Kit Carson uses the road on nearly a daily basis to, uh, go to their substation, which of course benefits a large part of the community. Kit Carson has in fact, yeah, contributed to the survey also. They're, they're one of the, uh, the people that contribute to the survey. So, in my mind, this is one of those, um, roads, I, you know, I've never advocated adopting every road that comes before us, because we can't afford to do it. But this is one of those roads that was developed long ago, you know, whatever this, whoever the subdivider is, is long gone, and you've got all of these, these people who maintain their own, uh, short runs to their houses, but who can't be expected to maintain this arterial road, um, that's used by the public at large. Um, and, and so, in my mind, this is exactly the, the kind of road that, that we do need to adopt. Uh, it's only half a mile, uh, I believe, uh, and I would hope that if, if we're able to adopt it today, that when the road department goes out, just go slow on that base course, and as soon as you've filled in the crevices, um, stop, you know, so that we don't end up with a cushion that ends up getting washed away. But, you know, it will be what it will be, and, and, uh, like I said, if it's adopted, then, you know, the road department will use their, their judgment in, in bringing it up to, uh, our standards. Uh, the only other thing is that on the proposed cost to estimate routine maintenance, I did a little arithmetic, um, we have 340 miles of road, we have about a $2 million budget, which includes oil and gas and changing tires and, you know, some pit run, some base course, and if you divide the 340 miles into the $2 million budget, it comes to closer to three, uh, to, to $6,000 for a mile, every mile of road. Um, so it's about 3,000 to maintain a half a mile, uh, rather than the five that you had listed here. Uh, so, I didn't know exactly where you came up with it, but I just wanted to bring that up, that it's probably somewhat less on an annual basis.
Chairman? Commissioner Sanchez?
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, also, uh, Harold, you know, I'm looking at, uh, this with that substation, you know, we benefit, my district, District Two in Cuesta, you know, we benefit, because if, if something goes down and the trucks from REA can't get back there, you know, how, my, my constituents will be out of power for, who knows? You know, so I think this is a, it's a win-win, and then also, it's a safety issue as a concern. And then also it's a safety issue as a concern. And I've got some numbers for the road reviewer. I picked, I had gotten two gentlemen out of the Red River area because they wanted to be on board. And they've been busy, but that's why they hadn't made the last meetings, but I do want to get those numbers to you, Mr. Salazar, and that way we can go forward with that road review committee. And I think even if Kit Carson just said that they donated to the survey, that's great. So I think it's, I think it's a great idea. Thank you Chairman.
Okay, sir.
So Chairman, just Earl, I just want to clarify, so the constituents from that area contributed to pay for the survey? Survey's already done?
They paid for the survey?
Oh.
No, there's been no survey done at this point. That's why I need to comment very quickly, but I'll wait till the commissioner's through.
The money is allocated or the money is sitting there or?
None of that has happened. What I wanted to comment on was the procedure that we've been following because of the survey cost and because of the statutory requirements. The statute requires that the survey be prepared to be filed with the clerk and there be a period of notice before the commission actually adopts the road. What we've done previously in similar circumstances to avoid incurring the survey cost up front is the statute allows the commission to direct the road viewers to do the survey or to do anything extra. And so what we've done is we've had a vote directing the road viewers to perform the survey. In this case, it would be, they would do it through the assistance of the local landowners and then it would have to be filed with the county clerk and then come back for the commission for a formal vote of adoption.
Okay. So then what we're looking for today is to have the survey done?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So okay, with that said then, Earl, so then what we're looking at then is that if we adopt this road after the survey's done, the $13,300 which you're proposing would then be charged to the district in which this road is being proposed adopting in. So it doesn't impact the budget of the other four districts, is that correct?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
What, so did a road viewers committee go through this, this particular road or not?
May I speak?
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is John Wood and I have lived on Tres Lomas Road for about 10 years. Every year, there's a new house built in this neighborhood. About three years ago, I undertook it myself to see about getting the county to take over this road. We have had two separate road viewing committees look at this road and to date, you know, I guess we're looking at another committee. Let me clarify briefly on how we were advised by council here to approach gathering money for the survey. We went to each resident in the neighborhood and asked for a pledge or a commitment of a certain amount of money to cover the cost of the survey. We got pledges from every member of that, of our community. On top of that, I approached Kit Carson and Mr. Luis Reyes generously has pledged $500 toward the cost of this survey. Now those monies will not be collected until we actually receive from the commission a go-ahead, in other words, that you are willing to adopt our road. And so people are waiting with their checkbook in hand or whatever. And when we, when we have that, that okay, that go-ahead, then that process will begin of collecting the funds and delivering it to the surveyor. But now I understand it's necessary to have the road viewers to, to do what, I'm not exactly sure.
Mr. Malone, if you can explain the process.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, the statute specifically says that the road viewers are supposed to get the survey. Now, there's nothing to prevent the commission, as it has done in the past, from funding the survey or from the community members who are seeking the road from funding. It's just a formality that the vote would be to send this back to the road viewers to obtain the survey, in this case with funding from the, from the community. The statute also provides though, that the adoption cannot actually take place till after the survey has been filed with the county clerk.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Blankenhorn.
Thank you. You know, the problem with that, of course, is that we cannot commit these funds unless we're assured that there's going to be an adoption. And so if we can make a motion today to vote to direct the survey to be completed and once the survey is completed and filed to adopt the road, then that would, that would work. But otherwise, you know, we're left to some future vote.
Unfortunately, Commissioner Blankenhorn, the statute requires that the, that the survey be filed before the formal vote to adopt. You can, you could word your motion, I assume that you would be the one making the motion because it's in your district, that you could word your motion to indicate that the commission plans to adopt the road, but the, to meet the statutory requirements, it has to be filed with the clerk before the vote can happen to actually adopt it. I can't change what the statute says.
Well, then that's how I'll make the motion and hopefully the residents of the area will take that as sufficient security for their money to complete the survey.
Let me just ask the question, do we know how much a survey is going to be?
Yes, sir, we do. The survey is for roughly $2,500. And I will also add that yes, Kit Carson has a substation, an important substation there. There are multiple trucks using that road every day. Also, Kit Carson is installing a special building for their fiber optic cable upgrade to the county. So this is apparently is going to be a kind of a hub for that.
So it's to their benefit as well?
It is very much to their benefit as well as the residents. The third thing I'll bring up is that this is a road that leads to the new national monument.
Monument area?
Exactly. And there are a good, a good deal of recreational people come out to mountain bike on the trails there, so that's an access point.
What is the length of this road again?
We are, well, the road is, we're asking for one half-mile and that, if you look at the map, that will allow every neighborhood on the trunk line to, to, you know, have a good use of the road. So the worst part is, is the first quarter-mile on top, it's very flat, it is absolutely riddled with potholes. And so I would also question respectfully the amount of pit or base course that is being recommended to be put down here. This area is all alluvial fan, it is basically excellent substrate for building roads. What, in my opinion, needs to happen on this section of road is a good grading job rolling and to crush up the boulders and the cobbles and the large stones and they're compacting that with some water. And that, you know, without the addition of a lot of base course, I think we could come up with a very good road. The other question I have for Mr. Salazar is there are, there exist at least two culverts in that section of road on the downhill side. Are you proposing two more culverts?
Yes. Actually, one, one more, but we got to get two culverts to make one.
Okay, so one additional culvert. But two do already in place and I assume they were put in there by Kit Carson.
How long have you been coming to this commission for help on this road?
About three years.
Okay.
And Chairman, and John, I greatly appreciate your, but you know, the county doesn't not, does not own a sheep's foot roller, what you're requesting. We don't own one, so I think Earl is basing it on what material and what machinery we do have. You know, I, you know, I've built a lot of roads and a sheep's foot roller is what you're looking at to actually push the rocks down into the, so that you have more material. And what Earl's process is, is trying to cover some of them rocks and some of those, because we don't have a sheep's foot roller which would actually do what you're, what you're looking at. So I, you know, I just, just so you know where Earl's coming from and what we have to work within, within the county, so.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, this question for Earl. You're looking at 939 tons of base course, could we put any pit run before the base? And that would answer, that way we don't put that much because I think the pit run would be cheaper than one and putting this much base course. And then that'd make it even more solid with the pit run underneath it.
Uh-oh, we're talking, we're talking with Rick Tohio, the foreman, that road already has some nice gravel, we're just going to bring, do some road drainage, crown it up with the material that's already there and then throw the base course on top of it so it could.
And I guess I'm just looking at future usage, you know, with a pit run, which is bigger stuff and kind of like a good solid foundation before the, but.
Mr. Malone, what is your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, the statute allows the commission to send the matter back to the road viewers for further action. And in this case, the further action that needs to happen is the, is the survey. And then we file that with the clerk and bring it back to the commission for its final decision.
I've got an idea here. I'm reluctant to risk the neighbors' money, so here's the way I would like to do it. I would like the county to pay for the survey. That way we've got an investment in the survey and then we come back and we adopt the road and then when the work begins, we take the $2,500 that has been committed and we put it towards these improvements. That seems to me to be the best solution, if that works for the neighbors. Otherwise, if the neighbors are willing to take the risk and do the survey, we can do it the other way. But I kind of like it that the county has that investment in upfront, it doesn't cost the county any more money in the long run.
Mr. Malone.
Mr. Chairman, I think that that would be permissible under the statute. The only slight modification that I would make to that, just to keep it as clean as possible, is if, if this commission chose to fund the survey up front and then obtain the reimbursement that the landowners have, have committed for the survey itself, that would be my only slight recommendation to vary Commissioner Blankenhorn's proposal. But that would all be permissible if that's what the commission wants to do.
Mr. Blankenhorn, you want to restate that motion?
Well, I'd kind of like to hear from John real quick to see, I really want to make this the, the neighbors' decision, you know, since they have come up with the funding. Would you rather use that money for the survey up front and then, you know, I fully believe that this, this board, when it, when it makes a commitment, will follow through with it. So I really don't think the risk is great. But I just wanted to give you that option.
Thank you for that option. It's, it's kind of a tough call. I appreciate your faith, good faith in us and, you know, I, I got to say, I'm willing to go either way with, with what you think. I don't think I can make that decision for everybody else.
All right, I'll just, I'll just make a motion then, we'll leave it the way it is, you know, the monies are, you don't, you won't have to go back and explain to Luis Reyes or any of the neighbors, any changes. We'll just go with it as planned. I'll make a motion to instruct the appropriate people to get the survey completed and have it, have it recorded with the county clerk, with the commission's intention of adopting the road, once the survey has been completed, and to collect the funding for the survey from the neighbors and Kit Carson.
May I make one interjection here? When we got our survey, we did not get bids for this. We went to Scott Crowell, whose father actually happens to live on, in the neighborhood, went to Scott. Jim Crowell, his father, had done a survey of that road back in the 80s, I think, and that survey was determined not to be sufficient for what the county needs. We asked Scott to give us a quote for doing that survey. And so if you, if the county, if you guys now want to have a survey, are you going to require, will you accept our survey or are you going to require a bid, bids for surveys?
The amount involved doesn't require bids.
Okay. So you will accept?
Okay, so if you guys provide the survey, then I don't have to make any changes to the motion.
Hi. Good morning.
And I'll second that motion and we'll go ahead and discuss it.
Elsa.
I just want to remind the commission that the monies, I'm not sure where these funds are going to come from, because a lot of the monies, we were very committed to other roads earlier in the year, including some of the grants. So this is something that's probably Earl's going to have to meet with Leandro on to see to come up, obviously, if this road does get adopted for these funds. Two, it's my understanding that you want, do you want the community to do the survey or the county?
I was going to ask for that clarification on that.
I'm a little confused.
From the motion. Commissioner Blankenhorn.
The community will provide the survey and then the county will record it.
Okay, okay. Since the community is actually.
A group?
Yeah, a group, is attempting to do it. Obviously, they can procure it the way they need to procure it on their end and of course record it, will record it. So it's good to go with what you got.
Okay.
Okay. But I just want to remind the commission, we do have commitments already made to roads within your own district, so it's something that Earl's going to have to meet together with Leandro on the finance side to ensure that we're going to have monies available for any improvements if this road is adopted.
And as was stated earlier, the monies to pay for this will come from the particular district that this road is on?
Yes, and it just depends which road fund, because I know there's, there is some placed within the road department, but a lot of that has been committed either for maintenance or has been committed to a project that's, we foresee now in 1415. So that, that was my only concern, is that we have to ensure that we're going to have that funding. And of course, Earl and Leandro will have to let you know because Leandro's the one that does the budget, so.
That will.
I would have to meet with him. It's out today, yeah.
Lock that into the final decision?
Yes.
And it seems to me that when the work is completed and you use as much base course as necessary, but no more, then, then you come back and, and you inform the commission of the amount that was invested. And then that will actually come from my portion of the annual road department's budget that goes for capital expenditures. And we determined that at the beginning of the year to be about $180,000. And so each of us gets $30,000. My $30,000 from last year is what's paying for Guyana. Next year, I'm going to, my 30 will be nearly cut in half depending upon how much base course you use to go to this. And so that's the way we lined it out when county manager came up to the podium and said, if you guys are going to keep considering taking these roads, you better figure this out. And that's how we figured it out. So, so, you know, once it's all done, you come back and tell me how much you spent and then Elsa, you write it down in your little ledger and Leandro will write it down in his and, and when I ask for my other project, you guys will tell me, now wait a minute, Blankenhorn, you already spent that money. So I think that's how it should go. Thank you.
So it's my understanding, Commissioner Blankenhorn, the monies that would be used towards the proposed adopted road would be from the fiscal year 1516?
Yes, the, we've already made our commitments for the prior year.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
So you wouldn't see any improvements on the road until 1516, next year?
No, I'm hoping that we get it done this fall. No, I'm, I'm hoping that we get it done this fall. Um, and, and can roll it over, uh, similarly to what we're, we're doing with Abregadero. But, you know, we'll, we'll let you guys figure that out with Leandro.
Okay, and, and also Mother Nature.
And Mother Nature.
We are, we are expecting, they're anticipating a wet winter, so we'll see. Just depends.
I understand. And, and I'm sure the people who live there understand also.
And, and this will still have to come back to us one more time.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, before you can even get to work, so.
So, for now, the survey.
Yes.
For now, the survey. Okay, Madam Clerk, go ahead.
Mr. Blankenhorn?
Yes.
Mr. Blackenhorn?
Yes.
Chairman?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Salazar, if he can stay in the room. Commissioners, I, there was one other item with regards to roads, and that was, um, item twelve C. That's the request to adopt Doniana Road, as a county maintained road. If we could, uh, amend the agenda to include that, now that Mr. Salazar is still in the room-
So moved.
-that way. Okay, I'll go ahead and second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Blackenhorn?
Yes.
Mr. Blackenhorn?
Yes.
Mr. Blackenhorn?
Yes. Okay, um, Doniana Road, uh, I placed on the agenda, as you all know, we, we had a, a petition from, uh, Nick Brunchal, uh, who lives at the end of, of Doniana, which is in fact a, a town of Taos Road. But there is a, a little bit of a dog leg that is, what would you say, Earl, about two-hundred feet in length?
Right.
Um, that has, because of all the traffic going through it, has washed away. And, so the neighborhood in that area, including Mr. Nick Brunchal, who's pretty much the, the group leader there, the neighborhood leader there, have asked for the county to, to do some maintenance on that road. Um, when they came before the commission a few months ago, they presented a, a petition to us. And so, if we follow the process on this one, the, the next step would be then, uh, Mr. Malone, to appoint a road viewers' committee to, to go over it.
That is correct.
Okay. And so, I would like for this commission to, to consider that, um, as well, um, you know, we're talking about collaboration with the town of Taos, um, maybe some sort of a, uh, joint venture with the town of Taos, since it is attached to a town of Taos street. I don't know. Earl, what would you propose?
Um, I'm not sure. I, I know we need, it needs work. I passed by there. The only problem with that road is, uh, when we go in, there's really not a place to turn, just because it goes into everybody's driveway. We'd probably have to get some kind of easter meant to see how we can turn our equipment around out of that little space there. But-
Simply backing up wouldn't do it?
Uh, probably not in the winter. And then, when we push the snow, where are we gonna push it? To their driveway, or, you know, it, it, unless we back into their driveway and push the snow outwards?
So, these are all things that a road viewers' committee could determine?
They're gonna have to look at, yeah.
Okay, so that's the only thing that I'm asking for today, uh, Commissioners, is that, uh, the road viewers be appointed or asked to, to look at this, uh, small dog leg. Commissioner Sanchez?
Where's this, uh, where's the location of this?
It's, um, Taos Health Spa in Rancho's, the south side spa. Uh, that's Doniana Road. Um, it, it goes in front of it, and then it stops probably, what, about five-hundred feet, um, beyond the, the health spa.
And let me ask you this, Chairman, would, uh, that come out of your budget?
Yeah, I mean, if that's what we're doing nowadays, that's, that's what we could do.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Harameo?
Chairman, uh, members of the commission, on Doniana Road, it did go, uh, to the road viewers once, but a committee, only one committee member showed up. And also for, to let the commission know, there's three other roads besides Doniana, uh, Pacheco Road, uh, Las, uh, Camino de las Vacas, and there's one other road, Spruce Road, that the road viewer still need to, to review also, that, uh, and most of those roads, we've called the road viewers committee twice, set up meetings, and, um, and he saw his client commitments from-
Maybe it's an item that we need to put on the agenda, as well as the road viewers' committee and the reappointment of those individuals, so that the progress on county roads doesn't stop. That way, if you can put that on the next agenda, that way we can consider taking in some new, uh, people that might be interested in, um, serving. So, um-
And, and Chairman, uh, with this, we would, Earl, you would also bring back an amount that would need, uh, to bring this up to some kind of standard?
Right.
And, uh, then we'd also have to do a, uh, survey on that road, too. So, that'd be something that, um, you know, either the, the constituents on that road would have to pay for, like they did on this previous one.
Right.
So.
So, if, if we can, um, re, re-ask the, uh, road viewers' committee again to, to come back and, and look at the roads that have been mentioned already, and if this can be included, I would like to set that in the form of a motion.
I'll second that.
Could we ask, uh, to see the rest of the roads that need to be seen, too?
Right.
Mr. Chairman, the other roads are not currently-
On the agenda. Okay, so with regards to this particular road?
But, you, Mr. Malone, but they have been approved by the commission, so-
It's already been done by the commission, so it's just an administrative thing to get the committee out there.
Right. So, you can, you know, because it's already been passed.
Are any of those other three roads in my district?
What's that?
Are any of those other three roads already in the queue for road viewers? Are any of them in my district?
Uh, I don't think so.
One of them is in District Five, which is Pacheco Road. That's what you heard last time. Uh, I'm not sure where Spruce or Camino de las Vacas is. Red River Spruce Road.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Salazar, if I could get with you and give you the numbers of those two gentlemen in Red River, I'll give you that. Okay, thank you.
All right.
Okay, and, uh, that's it?
Yeah.
Madam Clerk, go ahead.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, um, we will continue. Uh, thank you, Mr. Salazar, with the rest of the agenda. Item, uh, nine B, update from the Taos County Adult Detention Center. Jonah Gonzalez, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, members of the commission. Mr. Harameo and Mr. Malone, I'm gonna do a review of the Adult Detention Center. Um, as a reminder, just to let you know that I've been overseeing the Adult Detention Center for approximately a year now. And, um, within that year, we've made a lot of accomplishments, and we have goals set for the next year. And I just wanted to bring that to the, the commission, so that you guys would know what we're doing, and what we have been doing, and what our goals are for the future. Um, starting with training, for the last year, we did an assessment of all our training, and we created and gathered trainings from the New Mexico Association of Counties, um, through the accreditation standards, policies and procedures, and other sources. With those trainings, we have invited, uh, the New Mexico Association of Counties, Mr. Art Murphy, who is a jail specialist, um, Grace Phillips, who is the general counsel, and, uh, James Chavis, who is risk management. So, we had them three come down different times, uh, throughout the year to do different trainings for our staff. Mr. Estrada from the, uh, Department of Corrections, uh, he came down, did some training with the staff. We've collaborated with the Sheriff's Department for some security training. Uh, we've gotten with other, uh, detention centers, and we've shared training with them. Their staff came down, did training. We sent our staff to their facilities to do training. And, uh, we're, um, trying to take advantage of our resources, so that not everything is done just in-house. With the community, through Tri-County and healthcare partners, for medical and mental health training for our staff also. Orientation and training requirements, there's a list of everything that the staff have already gone through. All our staff currently have been, um, certified through the orientation training. I know a lot of staff had already had orientation training, but, uh, went through it again. They were presented certificates, and that has been completed. For the annual training, there's a list of requirements for them to become certified officers. We are still working through that process. We're about sixty percent through. Um, with some of the turnover and some of the operational changes, it's kind of taken, um, I wouldn't say a backseat, but it's not the highest priority, as we had anticipated in the past. Although, the goal is, by the end of this year, all our officers will have been certified through the New Mexico Association of Counties and the accreditation program this year. Any new staff will start going through the training next year. But, like I said, our goal is to have everybody certified as officers by the end of this calendar year. Additional trainings-
Commissioner, um, Brony?
Jonah?
Uh-huh.
You know, we talk about certified officers. Are, then, um, you know, do you have kind of a step program set up within the adult detention centers, so that as your officers become certified, that then they move up in, in pay, and, so that they have a reason to become certified?
Yes, we do. Um-
Okay.
When staff are hired, they're hired, um, at a level where they are not certified and on probationary status. After their, uh, probationary status has been completed and they become certified, they're given a, a one-dollar increase. And then after that, they have evaluation processes that they go through, that they can be, um, put in for merit raises and increases.
Do we have trouble with, uh, retaining officers after they become certified?
I haven't really seen that lately. I know there was a lot of turnover at the beginning. Um, the retention has gotten a lot better. Um, I'm hoping that, with the environment, the morale, the training, and our goals for the detention center will, um, create a, a healthier environment, and our staff will stay longer. And that's what we're currently seeing.
Thank you.
Additional trainings for the detention center, um, these additional trainings are not required, um, for certification, but it is training that our staff had specifically asked for. Um, so we have, uh, pepper ball certification, OC spray, defensive driving, mental health first aid, inmate con games, alcohol and drug withdrawal, and first aid and CPR courses. Taos County Detention Center supplies, um, we have gotten supplies and equipment for our staff. Some of the equipment, we just made additions to, and other equipment we, um, purchased. Uh, the metal detector for the entrance, we've also gotten, uh, metal detector gloves. So, when our officers do pat searches, um, after they go through a metal detector, or if a metal detector doesn't pick up everything we have, our officers will carry a metal detector glove. And it, they're able to do a more thorough search. Uh, transport belts and chains, uh, bulletproof vests for our transport. Um, we do transports, and to protect our officers, we, um, are trying to get them the equipment, such as what the Sheriff's Department carry, just in case of an emergency or if something happens. Flashlights, uh, window coverings, handcuff boxes. Uh, handcuff lock boxes are a box that goes over the handcuffs, um, and which would be harder for a detainee to actually escape from handcuffs. Handcuffing, and it, it's just a second layer of security for the officer's while a detainee is on transport outside of our facility. Our suicide blankets, helmets and smocks, um, those are an extra, um, security, like extra security for our staff. Blankets can be torn. Um, detainees can still bang their heads up against the wall. So, we've got some, some suicide blankets and helmets and smocks for them to be able to wear, so that what they do have is not used, um, against themselves. We've put together first aid jump kits, um, available for the staff, um, just in case there's not time for medical, um, to arrive or to respond. We have for jump kits available for the staff. A tiger system. The tiger system is a system that we put in place. We have a kiosk in the lobby, and that kiosk, um, takes place of our staff having to receive money, be responsible for money, um, and handling, handling money. When it's a weekend or a holiday and our staff are not available to receive funds for the detainees, the kiosk is there twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Inmates are allowed to receive their funds immediately, as soon as, uh, money is entered into the kiosk. It, uh, prints out a receipt, so that the families have an immediate receipt, and it helps with the accountability of funds and money going into, um, the detainees' accounts. And it communicates that information to not only our administrative staff, but also the kitchen staff, commissary staff, and the families, including the detainee. Um, we developed a lot of working relationships with organizations and the community. Um, we have met with everybody we can to better the facility. We want to be open. We wanna be, um, transparent. And we welcome whoever would like to be involved with these detainees, um, as far as services, programs, tours, information, suggestions. Uh, we're very open to making our organization better. And I think that a detention center, it takes a community to run one. And the more people in the community that are involved with these detainees and with our organization, the better off we are. And therefore, when the, when the detainees are released, they and their families have a place to connect and go afterwards, so that they're just not let go out on the street and have no resources to go to if they need them.
Commissioner?
Complete-
Okay, go ahead.
Completed projects. Um, the razor wire around the, the back of the building has cut off a lot of the contraband, um, coming in from the back, from the outside. Reflective security door numbers, we have put in all the doors inside the detention center, uh, for identification. And in the case of an emergency, if the fire department or somebody needs to go in, and there's no power, those reflective door numbers can be noticed. Um, our file room, we combined, consolidated and reorganized all the detainee files. Um, there were multiple files for certain detainees. We consolidated them all, rearranged our, um, file room, and have created more room for, for future files. I mean, you know, we have to keep detainee files until the age of ninety-nine, so that's a lot of people coming in and out of the facility, and a lot of files that we have to hold on to until these people reach the age of ninety-nine. We also added front desk security. Um, our front desk security is in addition to the metal detector. It's a person who is there, available for the public, um, can also monitor what comes in and out of our facility. A project and accomplishment, we organized a shakedown with the, uh, Department of Corrections. They brought in some drug dogs, did a full shakedown, and we removed a lot of contraband and a lot of illegal, um, illegal items that were being, um, smuggled in, housed into our detention center. And it was a cleanup, so that our officers now are organized and know what to look for, and, uh, what is, what is, uh, not to be in certain cells and certain pods. Um, we are holding detainees accountable for property damage. If they damage property, um, we are charging them through the district attorney's office. Um, we're just not taking the blow for, um, damage to property. Detainee accounts, we closed about five-hundred-and-fifty outstanding detainee accounts through the jail management system and the sleuth, so our jail management software program has been cleaned up. And our internal investigations and our outside agency assessments, that's another thing that I do welcome, because if we have investigations and assessments from outside agencies, uh, different set of eyes, it only makes us better as a facility and a county. Completed paperwork and documentation for disposal of assets and old items, we've done a lot of asset cleanup, um, storage, et cetera, trying to, uh, organize in a manner where, you know, in the future, or if somebody needed to go in and do another assessment, everything is in order to where it can be found. everything is in order to where it can be found. Policy and procedures, we've completed revisions and we're also currently working on additional policies and procedures. Some of these policy and procedures are at the New Mexico Association of Counties currently being reviewed and approved. After they go through the county, then they will come to the commission for additional approval. And goals for the future for the Taos County Adult Detention Center, continue education and training. We want to rebuild our booking and our booking process. We want to implement the VINE system and we also want to implement the naloxone project. We want to support and work with the staff to help them learn, grow, and be confident as officers. And I think that is one of the questions where, you know, it'll help with retention. Staff morale. Completing a reorganization chart to best fit the facility and its needs, maintaining the budget and working programs with vendors and finance. Complete revision of policies, adding new ones and revising old ones to best fit our facility.
Jonah, what is our current budget at the adult detention?
Our current budget for the adult is approximately three million.
Three million?
Yes.
Has it gone up or has it gone down?
It's currently, it's remaining the same, but with cost savings, we're hoping to just utilize our resources to the best of the county, get everybody exactly what they need so that nobody's in a shortfall, but not abusing the funds either. So, we're taking a real good look at that and we're taking our budget very, very seriously. With that, I just have one announcement to make for the juvenile detention center. We have one juvenile inside of our facility right now who through our school and collaboration with the schools, has received all credits to graduate with a diploma through the detention center. So, when he goes home, he's able to get his diploma and walk with his class. So, that is a huge accomplishment for our juvenile detention center. Any questions?
Yeah, Chairman. Commissioner Jonah, overall, are you pretty much short-staffed now? How many personnel are you lacking?
We are currently short-staffed. We're still trying to recruit. We do have some potential applications. We're waiting for background checks. We'll do interviews. In the adult detention center, we're short about five and in our juvenile, we're short about two. Is that wrong, Brent?
And then-
I think we're short two budgeted positions on the adult side.
Okay.
But there's availability for three-
There is availability, yeah.
And then also, Jonah, you got there, it says working conditions. What have you done to perfect them, get them better for the morale?
It's physical plant, it's training, it's communication. It's getting the staff what they need and listening to them when they request. They know and understand that we can't do everything and provide everything right away. But with the working conditions, working with the staff, working with the union, working with management, together to make the working conditions, all in all, including in the physical plant, better.
And Jonah, do you pair them up when they have to go back there instead of that one individual going by himself? Or how does that work?
With the way the scheduling works, yes. Unfortunately, you know, we do have some shortage of staff, but we try to pair everybody up. And with the way our staffing is, there should be at least two together all the time.
Okay. Thank you, Jonah.
Chairman, Commissioners.
Jonah, I know in the past, in our old jail, even in our new jail, we, you do an inspection and sometimes we were invited to that inspection. I would like to do that again, just so that, you know, since we're putting three million dollars, I want to make sure that, you know, our liability is kept to a minimum. And I think it would just give us an opportunity to see your staff in action and our facility and how it's been kept up.
That would be great and that is very welcomed.
As a matter of fact, it is a requirement of this commission that those inspections be done periodically to make sure that the facilities are running properly and according to how you say is it should be.
Correct.
So, that would be good. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Blankenward?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. John, I just wanted to thank you. It's one of the hardest jobs we've got at the county, trying to run that detention center. Appreciate the fact that you stepped up and have been doing it over the past year. I know that your original expertise and commitment was to the juvenile. So, I just wanted to thank you for the work you've done at adult. It's always one of the bigger challenges that any county has. Thanks for the good news on the juvenile student also. That was good to hear.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the next item. Taos County donation of old tax records for the historical preservation to the Taos County Historic Society. And we have our treasurer, county treasurer, Ms. Susan Trujillo, welcome. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Brent Haramio is the deputy county manager and Mr. Malone and viewing audience. Before you, I have provided you some information on what the treasurer's has accomplished. And one of the projects was to take on what the previous treasures had done with the archiving of the tax rolls. And initially, they had been put on microfiche and then the last treasure put them on, they were digitized. And so, and going forward, Juanita Haramio in a few minutes will let you know what, how she has proceeded to take care of the, what she's done with the digitizing. But Juanita has taken on this project and that is to take the tax rolls, the books themselves that we have been storing in the treasurer's office. And she has found a way that they can, instead of being destroyed at this point, at this time, they could be destroyed. But they're beautiful books and with information that people that can appreciate history, historical, they have historical value. And like I said, Juanita and Ernestine Cordova have taken on this project. So, I'm going to go ahead and let them fill you in on the details.
Thank you, Susan. Commissioners, Mr. Romero, Mr. Malone, Mr. Haramio. What happened during the administration of Lorraine Reese, she decided to film all the tax rolls that we had because of storage issues, the old building and where they were located. A lot of times, she created a liability to go down there and move books that weighed over forty pounds. And so, that was done and it took a period of about, from two thousand and two to two thousand and four. They were filmed by the corrections department in grants. And then it took a while for that project to happen. By the time it was completed, Evangeline came in and she basically did not want to destroy them because of the historical value. So, we kept them. But during her administration, she also decided to digitize them. And we did that. We had to retrieve the original rolls that were filmed by the Department of Corrections and those are, that is the original record and that is the record of copy that stays on the archive center in Santa Fe. And then we have the film in microfiche and then we also have the digitized copies that are now in the computer system which can be retrieved. To me, these books are very historical in value. They, the ones that we're going to be wanting to donate and to the historical society are approximately thirty-eight books ranging from the tax years nineteen twenty-four, twenty-nine, and nineteen thirty-one through nineteen sixty-three. The reason these books are valuable to me and I feel that they represent the depression era, the WPA era, and almost to the beginning of World War II. The WPA, which was the Works Progress Administration, started by President Roosevelt, which employed about twenty percent of the work of the United States workforce. The jobs that were created during this time were for roads, for sewer systems, for parks, school buildings, libraries, and the arts. As maybe some of you are aware that the murials that are in the courthouse, those are, were funded by the WPA. I did a little research in the nineteen thirty-six tax roll and at the beginning of the entry of the village of Taos, there's an ordinance where the WPA gave the village of Taos, which is now the city, approximately sixteen thousand dollars to start a sewer system and pipelines and so forth. So, to me, this is one reason that we need to preserve these books. We're also running out of space in the new building. And I also, we also went to the archives, made sure that we could, if we needed to destroy some of those books. But because these are the older ones, I would like to preserve them. And the John Heimz Martinez from the archives in Santa Fe suggested that maybe the historical society would like to utilize them. And so, I contacted Ernestine and she decided that they would like to do that. So, originally, they're going back to the old courthouse building. But that's approximately thirty-eight books, which are approximately twenty-four inches in length by twenty inches in width and about three to four inches in thickness. I suggested to the historical society, I used to belong to an organization called the Northern Rio Grande National Heritage Area, which encompasses three counties, Santa Fe, Rio Grande, and Taos. And I suggested to them that they ask for a grant, which they did, and they were granted some money. And then also, one of the ladies that was on this board came down, Ms. Willow, and she was really excited when she saw the books. So, she also put in for more grant money with the archives in Santa Fe, which they also got. So, right now, you know, we just want to make sure that you understand what's going to happen with the books and they're going to go back to their old home and be utilized by different people to look at them. I also did another, which was kind of interesting, so there's different ways that people can research them. My grandfather had a piece, had a piece of property which we have all inherited that runs from Kit Carson all the way to the end of Las Cruces Road, if you're familiar with that area, which is the morada by the pueblo land. He had three acres and at that time in nineteen thirty-six, the value of those three acres was a hundred and fifty. Today, those three acres have been divided into three parcels and the value for those three acres right now is at a hundred and thirty-four thousand. So, you can see the difference on the changes from nineteen thirty-six to the present. So, to me, the books are very valuable and I would like to see different people utilize them. We're going to keep the rest of them, which are from nineteen sixty-three through nineteen, through the year two thousand and two. And those are just too heavy and the reason for that is because in nineteen sixty-three, the Great Southwest Land Company came in with all the undeveloped lots that we have. So, it created a large volume. The rest of the books are in discs and in the computer. So, from two thousand and two to the present, all those are in the computer system.
We certainly appreciate the fact that you cared and the staff, the treasurer's staff cared enough to make sure that these are preserved and that the historic society is wanting to take them on. They are very valuable pieces of Taos history. They document the history of Taos and so it's very important to make sure that they are in fact protected. So, thank you very much and-
Thank you, Mr. Romero. Ernestine can tell you what that grant money is going to be used for, what they're going to do, how to preserve them.
Thank you, Juanita. Commissioners, Mr. Haramio, Mr. Malone. Susan?
Before we continue, Ms. Cordova, Mr. Malone, are we requiring approval from the commission today?
No, there's no approval required. I think this is just-
No approval necessary? Okay.
We've already gotten approval from the state archivist and the state records department.
Okay, very good.
Okay, we had Juanita contact us and then Willow Powers from the Northern New Mexico Rio Grande Heritage Area came by. And with her help, we applied for a grant from the New Mexico Records Advisory Board. And that came on and we received that grant in February. We received a second grant from Northern New Mexico Heritage Grant, which is a heritage area, which was to match funds for the first one because we usually have to match the grant money. So, we have four hundred dollars that was given to us by the New Mexico, Northern New Mexico Heritage, Rio Grande Heritage Area. And the rest of the match is being matched with manpower from members of the Taos County Historical Society as well as man-hours from the maintenance department of the Taos County. Yesterday, we were at the old courthouse and we did have the maintenance people come up and take some shelving, the archival shelving that we received through the grant. And they brought it up. We will be making arrangements with them when they can to set them up for us. And then arrangements will also be to transport the books from here to there. I've ordered thirty of the archival boxes to place the books. The other, which would be what, eighteen? I have to actually go in with Juanita to measure, to make sure that if we have any that are over three inches because the regular boxes that, they're up to three inches. So, if we have any that are thicker than that, we need to have those special order. But we're in the process and hopefully, we can get it done. And it gives us great pleasure to say that that's part of what we do is to preserve. And I want to thank you for the opportunity of allowing us. We will, of course, it will be available, you know, upon appointment because we don't have the staff to be there on a day-to-day basis. But we have a wonderful website. It's www.taoscountyhistoricalsociety.org. They can contact us. Through this, we have a monthly lectures at the Kit Carson Boardroom the first Saturday of the month. And I would invite you to come and join us. They're at two o'clock and we have wonderful programs. We have, coming up also is the annual Taos County Historical Society Luncheon, like we call it, a Christmas luncheon, where we gather all our historians there and we just break bread together. So, we invite you. I know both Commissioner Romero and Commissioner and Mayor Barone have been in attendance with us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cordova. Ms. Susan?
Commissioner, I would just like to add that it was important to me that the commission and the public knew what the treasurer's office was going to do with these books.
Thank you.
That, again, it went through the manager and then through the, through Mr. Malone to double-check.
Okay.
That, and that it was noted in the records that what was being done with these books.
Thank you so much.
So, thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioners, do you want a break for lunch? Do you want to continue with the agenda?
I know we have a public hearing at one fifteen and, you know, are the people for the next item here, I hate to make them wait also.
Okay, that's fine. We'll continue.
So, Cristobal here.
Okay. Item-
Item 9E, Discussion, Considerations, Decisions Regarding the Determination of the Need to Change Physical Address of Three Homes on Espinoza Road. Mr. Brian Cribbin. Morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Thank you very much for your time this morning. I'll be brief. There are three houses on Espinoza Road. Actually, Anissa, could we pull up that map, please? Thank you. There are three houses on Espinoza Road which require the attention of the board. Two are currently in the E-911 system at 382 and 382A, while the third has not been properly addressed. Is the second house on the lot of number 384. There is no record in the computer or the extant paper files of this house having been assigned an address in the past. Nonetheless, the owner of this third house claims that 382 has been her address for a number of years. For at least three years now, it has been standard practice in Taos County to address the second house on a property with the main house number plus a letter suffix. Thus, the, if the owner of this house had come to me for a new address today, I would have given her 384A. The owner of this house does not want that and wishes to retain 382. So, and unfortunately, I do not have the power to revoke the 382 and 382A addresses that have been issued. As per Section 7 of the Rural Addressing Ordinance, I am authorized to recommend address changes to the board. I recommend that the board assign the unnumbered house, 384A. However, there are, the two affected homeowners are here in the room, and if you would like to hear their input, I'm sure they would be willing to share. Otherwise, I stand ready for questions.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, go ahead and come forward.
And Brian, the biggest thing that I see, Chairman, is that we want to make sure that in the event we have an ambulance or a fire or something, that the address is correct so that we can get the correct people out there if somebody needs attention.
Yes, sir. Taos County's primary concern in this matter is emergency services and the quick dispatch of such. This is Janice Romero.
Hello. When I applied for my house to move to my dad's property in 2006, it was at the old courthouse, I believe. We went in, filled out paperwork, and they told us that we'd be 382. And we didn't realize it was given to another house until a few months ago. And the owner of the other property is here also. My son's an asthmatic, and if we were to call an ambulance, we have no way of getting any help to him or anything. And I don't want to change my address to 384A because I've been there for eight years. And I'd have to change, it's also my mailing address. 382 is my physical and mailing, so I'd have to change everything I have for my children's medical needs. And, I mean, I don't have the money to go and change everything. It would require like a whole change of everything that we have, driver's licenses and everything. And the other owner, Rudy, has also, we talked to him, and he's willing to change his address so we don't have to change ours because I don't know how long they've had this address. And they used to be known as 376 a few years ago, and now they're cut, put at 382. So when I did get my house address, I did go through all the proper channels, and I was given the number by the county.
Chairman. Chairman, Commissioners, I had talked to you.
Yes.
Romero and Rudy, I had not had a chance to talk to you. But it looks like to me, Brian, if it's, you know, if they're willing to work together, and I can understand, Mr. Romero, Mr. Romero's, you know, you got your peel box and all this already done. You know, if Rudy over there is willing to do that, would that save these folks some problems? What do you think, would there be any legal? Malone?
Commissioner, obviously, if the parties are in agreement, then there'd be no legal implications. The commission, and the commission under our ordinance has to make the change. Mr. Cribbin couldn't do it on his own. But if the parties are in agreement, then it's a simple matter.
What do you think, Brian? Would that work for both parties?
I'm totally fine with that. I just want to make sure that 911 addresses are clear. And unfortunately, I'm not allowed to just shuffle the numbers around.
Okay.
So Chairman, Mr. Malone, do we need then a motion to give Mr. Cribbin's some kind of authority to work with the two parties affected to move forward on this? Or what would?
Commissioner, the motion should be, apparently, we have the numbers all worked out, and the motion needs to be to change the number. And it would be, it looks like it would be, I can't tell from the.
Mr. Cribbin's, if Mr. Cribbin could describe which one would then be changed.
The Romeros would keep their addresses.
Yes, the motion would properly be to address the house to the right as 382, which would then be Ms. Romero. And the existing addresses in the computer system of 382A and 382 would have to be changed to a lower number such as 380 and 38A. That would be easily done.
So moved as explained by Mr. Cribbin's.
Go ahead and, okay. Madam Clerk?
Yes.
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 Yes, okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll move on to Item 9E, Discussion, Considerations, Decisions Regarding the San Cristobal Volunteer Fire Department, the Grant Application to Purchase Firefighting Equipment. Mr. Sanchez, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners. San Cristobal is coming in with a grant application. There is a match. They're requesting $10,000 in total funding to look at purchasing some firefighting equipment for their department. The match is 10%. That'd be $1,000, and that would be coming out of my state budget to support them, since they don't have any state funding as of this time. So if it's approved, they would just need some signatures on that.
Don't move. I'll go. Madam Clerk?
Yes.
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 Are you guys actually going to get some new equipment?
Yes.
Awesome. I know you guys had a lot of hand-me-downs and, but that's great too. But new equipment is also great.
Both.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Brent, are we?
So moved to take a break for lunch.
You want to do that? You don't want to continue with the rest of the agenda? Okay, so if you can let Leandro know that we'll. Okay.
The rest of it can be after lunch. It's scheduled for 1:15.
So we need a motion and a second?
You have to say.
A vote?
Yes.
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 Okay. Welcome back, everyone. Apologize for being late. Madam Clerk, roll call, please. Present.
Present.
Yes.
Yes, okay. We do have the discussion in the public hearing at this time. Item 10, for Considerations, Decisions Regarding the Final Public Hearing for the Bucolay subdivision, the proposed Bucolay subdivision. Mr. Vahill, welcome. Edward Vahill, Taos County Acting Planning Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Hanamiya, Mr. Malone, applicants, members of the Taos pueblo public. Thank you for allowing me to come before you today to present the Bucolay final plat subdivision application. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, before I move forward, for the record, I would like to provide the Taos County Clerk's Office a copy of the final plat application. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, you have been provided with a copy of the final plat of the Bucolay subdivision. Inclusive in this application, you have been provided with the final plat application Book One and Book Two. In addition, you have also been provided with a copy of a three-ring binder that includes, the table of contents include the notice of public hearing under Tab A. Under Tab B, you have been provided with a copy of the receipt for payment for final plat. Under Tab C, you have been provided with a letter dated September 24 from the planning director deeming the application complete. Under Tab D, you have been provided with planning staff's final plat findings for the proposed Bucolay subdivision. Under Tab E, you have been provided with a decision of the Planning Commission for the meeting held on December 11, 2013. Under Tab F, you have been provided with a decision of the Board of County Commissioners meeting of May 1, 2014. Under Tab G, you have been provided with a copy of a letter dated August 12, 2014, from Taos Pueblo, which also includes a letter dated April 9, 2014, from Taos Pueblo. You have also been provided with a copy of the application for permit to change an existing water right New Mexico office of the state engineer received December 7, 2012, inclusive of the handouts submitted by Taos Pueblo. In addition, under Tab H, you have been provided with a copy of a letter dated September 29, 2014, from Scott H. Sanger to Susan Jordan, attorney. Under Tab I, you have been provided with a copy of a letter dated October 2, 2014, from Scott Sanger, attorney, to Taos County Planning Director. And under Tab J, you have been provided with copies of the certified mailing receipts dated September 25, 2014, copies of the postings of the property, copy of the legal advertisement, which first appearance was in the Taos News on September 25, 2014, and a copy of the legal advertisement dated October 2, 2014 for the second publication. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Abeta Engineering Incorporated agent representing the Saint Bernard Expansion 3 LLC applicant-owner is requesting approval of the final plat application for the proposed Bucolay subdivision, subdivision number 002-2013, a type IV subdivision consisting of a 36-lot subdivision on 400 acres, more or less, with the lots ranging in size from 10.002 acres to 15 acres. The proposed project is located northwest of Taos, New Mexico, off of County Road B-143, also known as the Hondo Seco Road, approximately 1.5 miles west of New Mexico State Road 230 and the County Road B-143 intersection in the Desmontes area, Taos County, New Mexico. The proposed project is further described as lying within Sections 1, 2, 11, and 12, township of 26 north, a range of 12 east, and is further described as lying in tracks 2 and 3, Map 3, Survey 3, part of tracks 1 and 3, Map 58, part of track 19, Map 44, and part of track 8, Map 59, all within Survey 4 of the 1941 Taos County Reassessment Survey, and described as lying within the Antonio Martinez and Antoine Leroux Grant. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, at this time, I would like to refer you to Tab C of the three-ring binder. I apologize, let's refer you to Tab D, D as in David.
Of which binder?
Of the three-ring binder, the white binder that was prepared by planning staff. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the pre-application, before I start reading to you the final plat findings for the proposed Bucolay subdivision, I just want to state that this application has been in the process or first began its road towards final plat approval in March of 2012. The pre-application conference was held back in March of 2012, getting us to this point for final plat consideration. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, for the record, I would like to indicate that the final plat findings for the proposed Bucolay subdivision consists of nine pages. Planning staff will only read approximately, I believe, a page and a half into the record. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and the rest, we will refer to them by reference. On Tuesday, September 9, 2014, the applicant met with the planning staff for a review of the final plat application for the proposed Bucolay subdivision was held. The review included, but was not limited to how the applicant has satisfied the applicable conditions of approval imposed by the Taos County Board of Commissioners during the preliminary plat hearing for the proposed Bucolay subdivision held on May 1, 2014. The review of the application determined that applicable, excuse me, that conditions applicable to final plat consideration had been met, and therefore, as per Section 5.1 Final Plat Submittal of Ordinance 2005-8, Taos County Subdivision Regulations, planning staff, via a letter dated September 24, 2014, deemed the final plat application for the proposed Bucolay subdivision complete. The applicant paid a fee of $500 as per the fee schedule found in Article 10 of Ordinance 2005-8, Taos County Subdivision Regulations. The applicant also paid for the legal advertisement to appear in the Taos News on September 25, 2014, and the Taos News on October 2, 2014, meeting the 21-day notification period. In addition, the applicant sent letters of notification to the same individuals who received a letter of notification for the preliminary plat hearing who owned property within 1,000 feet of the boundaries of the proposed subdivision. The agencies that reviewed the subdivision application by means of certified return receipt mailings. Furthermore, the applicant also posted the property, the Taos County Administration Building, and the Taos County Planning Department. It is staff's determination that the final plat application of the proposed Bucolay subdivision conformed substantially to the preliminary plat and all supporting documentation contained herein, contained therein. As approved, and the applicant has complied with the final plat review process and the final plat requirements of Ordinance 2005-8, Taos County Subdivision Regulations. Further, planning staff has determined that the subdivision can fulfill the proposals contained in the disclosure statement and that the subdivision's proposals conform with the New Mexico Subdivision Act and with Ordinance 2005-8, the Taos County Subdivision Regulations. Therefore, planning staff recommends a conditional approval of the final plat application for the proposed Bucolay subdivision subject to the Conditions 1 through 33 identified in planning staff's report. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the decisions before you today is the approval, approval with conditions or denial of the final plat application for the proposed Bucolay subdivision. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, you have heard planning staff's recommendation. We introduced planning staff's report into the record. We identified the remaining pages of planning staff's by reference. If need be, we have those recommendations available. If you would like to make those, if you would like planning staff to read those individually into the record. At this time, planning staff concludes its presentation. If you have any further questions, or if you have any questions, planning staff stands for questions.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners?
Not at this time.
This time?
I do?
Please state your name for the record.
Alex Abeta. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commission members. First of all, I'd like to introduce the two members of the developer group. On the far right is Jerome De Montin, and next to him is Randy Hannibut. Of course, Scott Sanger is the attorney for the project, the agent engineer. As you signed our preliminary plat application months ago, is the Bucolay subdivision consisted of basically one bound book. Subsequent to that, for final plat, we've provided Book Two of the application. Book Two consists of all the agreements that were reached with the different neighbors, such as the Mariposa subdivision, some of the individual neighbors. It does not include any agreements with Taos Pueblo. However, Scott Sanger will elaborate on where we're with that today. We've made some headway with that. Under the final plat application, as Mr. Vahill presented, there's 36 lots, 34 are 10 acres each, 2 are 15 acres each. The subdivision is in a Royal Seco. Primary axis will be off of the Hondo Seco Road. At the preliminary plat application, we got into a lot of detail of what's in the book. Today, I'm just going to summarize the different sections of the book, and I'll be open to any questions you might have about the application. Starting with Book One, the first section includes the application, a table of contents, the FEMA floodplain clearance, the addressing requirements, et cetera. Tab One is Article Five, which is the final plat review process that Mr. Vahill referred to. And the majority of the information in Article Five deals with the final survey plat prepared by the licensed surveyor, which is Rio Grande Survey, Scott Kroll. It refers to the civil drawings prepared by Abeta Engineering. And basically, all of the civil engineering drawings, as well as the survey plat, conform to the subdivision regulations of Taos County. Behind those two sections, or that section, are the recorded preliminary plat approval of the Board of Commissioners and the recorded preliminary plat recommendation for approval of the Planning Commission. Tab Two is Appendix A, which is the water availability. the full build-out of the subdivision for a minimum of the 50 years. The subdivision lots are going to be allowed to drill individual water wells. They are allowed to share wells if a couple of adjacent landowners choose to do so. The limit maximum water use for each lot will be .5 acre feet. Tab Three are the liquid and solid waste disposal plans. Lot buyers will do their own individual septic tank reach field permits as approved by NMED or alternatives. Solid waste will be by, through Taos County or by private hauler. Tab C deals with, or Tab Four, Appendix C, deals with roads. All of the roads within the subdivision will be type C roadways. There's approximately three miles of roadway to be built. The construction contractor is Silva's Excavation. At the back of Tab Four is the STH Traffic Analysis required by NMDOT and the review of the process. Tab Five are the Fire Protection Regulations, or Appendix D, which shows that all roads meet or exceed the requirements of the subdivision regs as it pertains to fire access. It includes having a hammerhead turnaround every 1,000 feet of the road. The roads are 30 feet wide with 12 inches of pit run, 6 inches of base course as required. Tab Six is the Regulations, or Appendix E, Regulations for Terrain Management. That was reviewed in detail by Peter Vehill from the Taos Soil and Water Conservation Service, and he has given that his approval. Tab Seven is the Archaeological Survey of the 400 acres, which indicated a lot of isolated occurrences, and it indicated several archaeological sites. Two of the large ones have been set aside as open space areas that will be preserved forever. We have agreed to allow Taos Pueblo access to review these sites as they need to. Tab Eight is the Disclosure Statement prepared by Scott Sanger, and that includes all the information required by the standard format. It includes changes between preliminary and final plat. One of the big changes is dealing with how the developer will meet the requirements of construction of infrastructure. It indicates in there that the developer has chosen to build 100% of the infrastructure following final plat approval. The plat would actually not be recorded until after we certify to the county and they inspect that all the engineering or construction of the infrastructure has been completed, which we expect to be next summer sometime. The Disclosure Statement goes on and provides basically lot buyers a description of the utilities, the access, the requirements for the subdivision. Included within Tab Eight are the covenants and restrictions for the subdivision. It also includes all the letters from the different various state agencies on approval of the subdivision or recommendations for approval. Tab Nine is another section that changed between preliminary and final plat. That's the agreement to assure completion of infrastructure. On Tab Nine, there's a fold-out version of the engineer estimate. Basically, this is a combined engineer estimate slash construction bid. In looking at the columns within the estimate, there's a column for Silva's excavation. Those are the numbers bid by Silva's to build the project. The number is 1,291,26274. The engineer's estimate was 1,376,300. Separate from those two columns is the cost for New Mexico Gas to bring in natural gas mains for 139,630. Estimated costs for carbon electric to bring in underground power, 115,120. Putting all those numbers together, plus a 10% contingency shows, plus grocery receipts tax, shows that we're going to spend approximately 1,859,301 to build the subdivision out. All of that work will be completed prior to recording the plat, and what that does is the developer will not be allowed to formally market lots, advertise, or sell any lots until the county has accepted the termination agreement for infrastructure, which basically states that we've completed all the infrastructure. Tab Ten is the list of adjacent property owners within 1,000 feet that receive letters about the different publicarions. It includes all the state and local agencies that reviewed the application, including Taos Pueblo. It includes Floyd Archuleta from the Neighborhood Association. Attached to the back of that are the Taos County Property Identification Maps showing all the properties within 1,000 feet. Tab Eleven are the five sheets that represent the surveyor's survey plat. These are the sheets that get recorded upon completion of all the work. Tab Twelve are all the civil engineering drawings for the road plan and profile design. Since the preliminary plat, we have stamped off on the final drawings, and basically, the project is ready to proceed with construction. Upon final plat approval, the contractor needs to obtain a SWIP permit, Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan permit from EPA. That takes 14 days. We need to have the surveyor stake the lots, stake the road alignment, so we would anticipate starting construction probably the November 7th, November 8th area, provided that we receive approval. At this time, I've opened the questions from the commission. Commissioners?
Alex, I went to a meeting, Lower Desmontes Neighborhood Association, a couple of days ago, and Tony Benson was there, and the purpose of his presentation was to show where uranium has showed up in wells south of the Hondo River. And since your subdivision is within that band, I wondered if you could include in your disclosure statement the possibility of the 20, 20 bits per million, or whatever that designation is. I know that the EPA standard is 30, but it still seems to me that it would be a worthwhile disclosure to make to potential buyers. According to Mr. Benson, a $25 Brita charcoal filter takes you down to one, and so it shouldn't be any kind of an impediment to the development, but I thought, after hearing that, and upon Mr. Benson's suggestion himself, that it would be a good thing to add into the disclosure statement.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Blankenhorn, as a condition of approval, we have no problem adding that into the conditions, and then we could have Scott Sanger also provide that in the water section of the disclosure statement.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Commissioner Blankenhorn?
No, thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Barone? Mr. Sanchez, staff?
Mr. Chairman, at this point, I would like to have Scott Sanger talk a little bit about the recent developments with Taos Pueblo.
Please state your name.
Scott Sanger. Good afternoon. What I would like to do is approach and share with you statements that were worked out finally after 11 o'clock this morning. Here we go. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Scott Sanger. I'm an attorney licensed to practice law in the state of New Mexico. My client, St. Bernard Expansion III, has made application for final subdivision plat approval. Our subdivision application contains no variances from our subdivision's ordinance 2008-05 as amended to date. Our subdivision application has been approved by all state of New Mexico and Taos County agencies. We are grateful for the help that we've received from Acting Planning Director Edward Vehill and from Taos County Attorney Robert Malone. This particular application actually had us all thinking, a way to do it all. There is a supplement to the application we provided to Edward that you guys have in a small binder, and what these are are all the agreements negotiated with all the immediate neighbors, save for Taos Pueblo, and I'll get into that next. These are signed documents that will be recorded following completion of infrastructure at the time of the final subdivision plat approval, once the county accepts the installation of the infrastructure. As recently yesterday, we met with representatives of Taos Pueblo, and as late as this morning, a little after 11 o'clock, we came to agreement on the wording that's in this particular statement to the Board of County Commissioners. When working with Taos Pueblo yesterday, the meeting was attended by War Chief David Gomez, War Chief Secretary Daniel Suazo, and the water co-spokespeople Nelson Cordova and Gilbert Suazo, Senior, along with their attorney, Susan Jordan. Those gentlemen are here today, as is Susan Jordan. Initially, Taos Pueblo raised several issues, and I'm happy to say that we have already achieved mutually satisfactory resolutions to most of them. Part of what's in the package that Alex presented to you is a letter from me to Susan Jordan, Pueblo attorney, making changes to several of the documents that were previously submitted. There were changes made to the disclosure statement, to the covenants and restrictions, and to the design guidelines, and also to the construction contract. This is in response to Pueblo concerns about utter disturbing the surface with our infrastructure installation. An agreement was reached that prior to any disturbance of the surface, notice would be given to Pueblo War Chief's office so that they could be present, literally, as we started to scrape the earth. We don't know what we're going to find, but they'll be there with us to see, you know, if there's something that we find that's important. Certainly, measures will be taken at that time to deal with what we find. This is also in the construction contract. Our general contractor, who's doing the excavation work, has agreed to all of this, so it's going to be a circle of communication as we go through the infrastructure installation. There is one remaining issue, and that is with the Pueblo, and this morning, I believe we've come to a resolution. Taos Pueblo's concern was that our subdivision's use of domestic wells would have a negative impact on Pueblo's lands on the boundary of the subdivision. To mitigate the Pueblo's concern of potential damage to its water supply, my client has voluntarily agreed to permanently and irrevocably relinquish, that's distinguish from severance, 18 acre feet per consumptive use from the surface water irrigation rights pertinent to the land. There is an open legal question about how this can be done in the face of a new state statute and provisions of a long-awaited Abeta settlement, the answer to which we hope to resolve. There's essentially a lawyer's fuss about the meaning of similar words, and the words that we're talking about are relinquishment, extinguishment, abandonment. All of these are handled differently in different parts of our statutes and differently, again, in the Abeta litigation. Working with Taos Pueblo's attorney and with the War Council, what we've come to is that we're going jointly, we're going together, to work this out with the Office of the State Engineer. But the bottom line, in consideration for the Pueblo not objecting to the County Commission's approval today, my client has agreed, first, to the relinquishment of their water rights and to refrain from any sale of any lots within the subdivision until the relinquishment of the water rights is accomplished. Secondly...
So it'd be basically him giving up that amount of acre feet of water to the Pueblo?
No, just giving them up, taking them out of the ability to be used. How we do all that is something that we're yet to work out with, with the Office of the State Engineer, but it is my client's position that we are willing to give those up so that we don't take more water, and then taking more water would have a negative effect on Pueblo lands next door. So we're, it's, it's an agreement that was reached after a lot of thought, but literally, the subdivider is willing to counteract, to negate the effect on Pueblo lands next door by giving it up its rights to surface irrigation. Second thing, we did agree to several changes, and there's documents in your package that Edward shared with you, changes that are highlighted in the documents that show specifically how we answered each of the Pueblo's concerns. So at this point, what I'd like to do is introduce Susan Jordan, the Pueblo attorney, to confirm this agreement that I've just outlined to you.
So, Mr. Sanger, I guess I'm just curious about those water rights. If the subdivider, the owner relinquishes these water rights, they have to go somewhere. Are they going to be placed in a water bank? Are they going to be donated to the Pueblo, given to the Pueblo, given to a water entity nearby?
They're currently in, banked with the Aseki Association, and the problem that we have is literally within wording of a state law that was passed long after our application was submitted and deemed complete. There was a new state law passed effective in April of 2013 that essentially says you cannot separate water rights from your land and then go do domestic wells. There's only been one case about it so far, and that information has been shared with Pueblo attorney, and we've been talking about this for a while, and we have an added complication in that the Office of the State Engineer has no mechanism for doing what we're doing in terms of relinquishing the right to use those rights. So what it's going to do is it's going to send the lawyers into the Office of the State Engineer to resolve all of this, and what we have agreed with Taos Pueblo is that until this is resolved, we've agreed not to sell any lots. We're looking for certainty, but it's going to be a process to get to that certainty. My clients, we have hired special counsel to deal with the water rights, and there, the special counsel's charge is to take care of this as quickly as possible to end the uncertainty.
Thank you.
I may introduce Representative from Taos Pueblo. I don't know who's coming to speak.
You'll have to be sworn in.
When you're brought to this, Trump Action. Please state your name for the record.
Gilbert Suazo, Senior. Mr. Chairman, the Taos County Commission, members of the Taos County Commission, I'd like to acknowledge representation from Taos Pueblo. We have War Chief David Gomez here, Lieutenant War Chief Alvin Olohan, and War Chief Secretary Daniel Suazo. Also have Tribal Councilman Nelson Cordova here, and our attorney, Susan Jordan. My name is Gilbert Suazo. I'm a tribal councilman and co-spokesman with Nelson Cordova on our water rights for Taos Pueblo.
Welcome.
Thank you. Taos Pueblo appreciates the cooperation of the Bosole subdivision representatives in working out the issues that have been of concern to Taos Pueblo regarding that subdivision. In particular, a primary issue has been the subdivision's use of domestic wells and water that would impact our water supply on our adjacent lands. After much discussion regarding the water supply for domestic wells in the subdivision and the irrigation rights on the land where the subdivision... and the irrigation rights on the land where the subdivision is planned, we believe we have reached agreement to avoid a double-dipping situation. The Bosley representatives are now agreeing to permanently and irrevocably relinquish the use of 18 acre feet a year of consumptive use of surface water rights to the subdivision's Taos Pueblo, at this time, requests that your approval of the final plat for the subdivision be conditioned on the relinquishment of these water rights to be accomplished before any marketing, advertising, and sale of the subdivision lots occur. I would like to call on Nelson Cordova, our water rights spokesman, and our attorney Susan Jordan, to provide any other details regarding Taos Pueblo's position on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
... brought to this trial, actual.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Taos County Commission. My name is Nelson Cordova, and I've been appointed to work with the Taos, our Tribal Council, and I've served as spokesperson along with my colleague, Mr. Suazo, on our water rights case. And we have been at this case for over 30 years, and we are intimately knowledgeable about the water situation in the Taos Valley, having worked on issues similar to this for many years. And in our valley, we all know that water is already over-appropriated. The surface and groundwater that we have has already been committed for. And it concerns us greatly when we hear of instances where developers or other businesses might be dipping into both surface and groundwater at the same time. When we saw this application, we felt that that was not right, that putting straws into surface water and also into groundwater in an over-appropriated system would create problems, not only now, but into the future. So we, we made an attempt, and I appreciate the representatives from the subdivision reaching out to us also to address this issue. And I believe that it's time that the Taos County Commission take a look at some of the situations that exist in our valley, where we have insufficient water supplies and uses of this water is not enforced. And going into the future, we're going to have more subdivisions in this valley, and there's going to be more impacts to our surface and groundwater. And as you know, Taos Pueblo has lands in this valley that are situated strategically in certain areas. Some of these lands are close to non-Indian development, and the developments that take place on these lands is a great concern to us. So going into the, into the future, I ask that the Taos County Commission realize and recognize that Taos Pueblo is there. We have interest in this valley. We want to protect and preserve the water and the lands in this valley. So that is why we raised objections to the subdivision, and as Mr. Sanger stated, we've been able to work or find resolutions to those issues. And I appreciate their concern and their willingness to work with us. So with that, I concur with my colleague. If the County Commission sees fit to allow the subdivision to proceed with those conditions that were enumerated and also in those covenants, that we feel that we can work out a amicable solution going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cordova.
Thank you. Welcome, Susan.
Susan Jordan, good afternoon, County Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity, and thank you, War Chief and Taos Pueblo representatives, for allowing me to assist you today. I do represent Taos Pueblo. I am an attorney licensed to practice by the State of New Mexico. And I believe that Mr. or Councilman Suazo and Councilman Cordova have stated clearly and well the Pueblo's understanding, and I would just like to fill in a few pieces and make sure that I'm available to answer your questions so that we're all clear on how we're resolving this situation here. Because as Mr. Cordova mentioned, we believe we've come to an agreement with this developer. We have come to an agreement. That's what's been represented to you by the applicant's attorneys, and that is what we are representing to you today. And that agreement can be accomplished by your reflecting it in the conditions of approval. But also, as Councilman Cordova said, the Pueblo has a strong interest in working with the county to make the county aware of your obligations that change and evolve under state law, under the subdivision act, including the new one that Scott Sanger has mentioned regarding the use of domestic wells or the anti-double-dipping provisions that were enacted by the legislature in 2013. We are not proceeding with our objection to this application on the grounds of double-dipping, but we want to be clear on the record and have the Commission clear on how we have resolved that. The dispute, as stated in our letter to Chairman Romero in August 12th of 2014, that I understand is in your packet, does cite that subdivision act provision, and the dispute is regarding whether that act applies here. We've decided to not fight about whether it applies here, but that act does apply to Taos County and will apply for developments going forward, and that is where there has been a severance of irrigation water rights. Our difference of opinion is about whether it applies here, where some but not all of the irrigation water rights have been severed. This situation, I think, presented us with even more of an opportunity to work out a very appropriate solution that the developer proposed to us, and that opportunity perhaps came because the State Engineer has approved the severance of those water rights that were pending from the prior owner. And that severance did occur after 2013. We are just making our record clear on that as the issue that we're resolving. We are not asking them to sever the water rights. Commissioner Chairman Romero, you asked about whether the water rights would be sold, transferred off of the land. Where would they go? It is possible, under existing state law, under court-made law, for an individual to abandon their water right with intent to abandon. And so we are working with the developer to prepare a certificate of retirement and abandonment. They could accomplish this, perhaps by another means. The intent that we've agreed on is to relinquish, and we have agreed that that is as distinguished from a severance. We are not trying to push them into a further severance than the one that has already occurred by their predecessor in interest, so I wanted to take pains with those lawyer words, as Mr. Sanger mentioned. Please let me know if you have any questions on that provision at all. I want to just reiterate my client's request and understanding that their objection is withdrawn with the understanding that the Commission will be issuing the approval on the condition that the 18 acre feet consumptive use of water rights will be irrevocably, permanently relinquished prior to the marketing, advertising, or sale of any of the lots. And we understand that that could be recorded on the plat and would be part of the Commission's conditions of approval. And if that is what the Commission accomplishes today, we commend you. And we commend the, and I believe, as I was reminded yesterday, the, one of the owners assured me that he is not a developer and that he is very interested in the land. And I know they are the subdividers, so forgive me for calling you a developer. The subdividers and now the neighbors of Taos Pueblo, and they should be commended for this, to relinquish 18 acre feet of water is to make the valley whole on this issue, and that should be a model for other developers. And I will stand for any questions.
Misses?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I don't read statutes anymore, Susan, so if you could help me on that, and I should have done a little bit of research, I guess, but, so any severance that occurs after 2013, a sale of water rights, that prevents what? What does that prohibit?
And this is where lawyers may interpret the word severance. A severance would clearly occur when water is transferred off of the land, as opposed to simply changing ownership on the land and continuing for the same purpose when water is sold with the land and continues to be used for irrigation. The statute refers to subdivisions where all of the lots, if I'm recalling correctly, are greater than 10 acres, and that there has been a severance. The statute does not say any, all, or the irrigation water rights. So as you know from your prior work, Commissioner Blankenhorn, lawyers can disagree about that. It is incumbent upon the county, and we submit that the county's council, as you receive future applications, to work with us and to work with the State Engineer and the applicants to sort through those issues and perform your investigation, because the legislature has now placed this burden on the County Commissions prior to your approval of any
So then you can't use groundwater if you've done a severance in a subdivision? Is that the point?
So what they're saying is, instead of using a domestic well, and as you may know, domestic wells do not require a separate water right to be transferred in
Okay.
under state law. And so domestic wells are a concern because, new domestic wells, because they are not based in water rights in an already over-appropriated system.
Okay.
And so that's where the double-dipping occurs.
So if you've made a severance, then you would have, if you made a severance and then you want to rely upon a well, then you have to fill that with another transfer?
That's exactly what the statute provides, or hook up to a community system.
Right. Okay, great. Well, thank you for that. Would it matter to your client if the 18 acre feet were, like, granted to, say, Rancho's water and sanitation that's kind of not so much connected to the Pueblo's basin?
That's not something that has been suggested to my client until this moment, and I would need to confer with them. I would say that I'm probably, unless one of them comes up at the moment, and I believe I'm within my authority, to explain that the Pueblo did request during this process that the developers would, or the subdivider, would be agreeable and would provide us a condition of the lots. It was not something that we came to agreement on, but to be, to require the individual lot owners to hook up to a system if it became available to them. So certainly, the Pueblo's interest is in encouraging developments in the Taos Valley to hook up for a more sanitary and safe water supply for those consuming it, and a better management of the water resource within the valley. And so I'm certain that the Pueblo would be willing to explore that option as a manner of accomplishing the relinquishment, if that is also acceptable to the subdivider.
And that was going to be my question, Commissioner Blankenhorn and Commissioners, is we have the mutual domestic, what is it, Desmontes or Royal Secco?
Aseki Association.
The Aseki Association, as well as the Pueblo, and they're all entities that are going to be affected in some way or another by those waters being used out of that particular subdivision. So it would be nice if we could include that in today's approval.
And of course, I would have suggested it stayed in my district, but I just felt like it was probably a basin that was more sensitive to the Pueblo, so I, that's why I suggested Rancho's, but, I don't know, that maybe, we may be unnecessarily complicating matters at this juncture, and, but maybe if it could not, wouldn't be necessarily a condition for approval, but something that was just kept in mind because there are certain areas where water rights are in great demand, and yet, and the use wouldn't negatively affect the water basin in question. I really believe that that's true. Obviously, there's hydrologists who would have to be consulted, and beyond, beyond what I'm expressing as my opinion here, but, you know, and with the abate of settlement, there's a scramble for water rights, of course, you know, because each district was allotted certain, certain water rights, and in order for them to complete their service to their clients, they have to, they have to find sources to purchase. And so that's why, I know that was, the chairman was thinking that, and I was thinking that, and we're going, oh my goodness, there's these 18 water rights that are never going to be used, and yet there are needs for them within the communities. So it's why I bring it up, but I won't burden the approval of the subdivision based upon it, it's just something maybe for the parties to consider. Thank you so much to the Pueblo and to the applicants for working this out and making our job so much easier. Thank you, Susan, for your work, and Scott, for yours. Got to have good attorneys to get those agreements done, and I'm sure you guys worked hard on it this morning, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any further questions for me?
Mr. Malone, I just wanted to talk to our own attorney, Mr. Malone.
Mr. Chairman, the...
Your thoughts with regards to the transfer, the relinquishment of those water rights?
Mr. Chairman, as you know, in a quasi-judicial hearing, it is appropriate to meet in executive session so that you can receive my advice with attorney-client privilege. And any comments that I would make about this, I would like to make in executive session, and that would be my recommendation to the Commission.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'd like to direct this to Mr. Silva that's out there in the audience. If you could come up, I've got a question for you. And I know Commissioner Maroni and I, we're always looking for employment for our people in Taos County. Will you be employing people if this were to go through, Mr. Silva?
Local employees are local. So yes, it's all staying here locally, and I really appreciate the fact that that's able to happen. Instead of, like, too many times, projects go to contractors out of town. I'm sorry, Mr. Silva. I want to go over. I put on the drill.
You were in a firm under oath and penalty of law for perjury that's testimony?
Michael Silva. Mr. Commissioner, Chairman, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, as I stated earlier, yes, the question is, is how is this community going to benefit? Well, our company, employees, everybody who we employ, live here in the community. All the suppliers for this project will be, all the supplies will be coming from this community. And I do appreciate the fact that, in this case, the applicant chose a contractor. Of course, it was competitively bid, but it turned out that we, as the contractor being working on this project, are from here. Too many times, some of these projects go to out-of-town contractors out of town. Too many times, some of these projects go to out-of-town contractors and you see out-of-town people coming in and taking advantage of these projects. And of course, as far as the economy goes, we're going to benefit from this, not only just for the construction, but moving forward. You know, the real estate industry will see some activity there, and I think that over the years, we're going to benefit till the build-out, full build-out of this project. It could be maybe five years, 10 years, but it's going to be a benefit to this community. So yes, it's all local, as far as I know.
And Mr. Silva, I guess I bring this up, my district too, you know, Chevron Mining laying off 300 employees, will you be hiring new employees for this project?
Absolutely. It's a, it's a big enough job that, you know, given the time period over there, we're going to have to step up and probably hire some additional employees. So absolutely, if there's some people from the Chevron Mining that are looking for employment, they just have to go to our office and apply, and we'll be utilizing more people.
What's the number there, Mr. Silva?
It's 575-758-4562.
4562?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, do you see a need for executive session at this time? Is it your recommendation that we meet?
Yes, I think it should be brief, but I would recommend that.
And Mr. Malone, would we go into executive session before we end the public hearing or after?
No, I would suggest at the end, after we've allowed for public comment, if there's going to be any.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else who wishes to speak for or against? Mr. Miera, come forward.
For an affirm under oath and penalty of law for perjury that the test may involve today, Mr. Rodeo.
I do.
Please state your name and address.
Carlos Miera. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, and just real briefly, as got a chance to review the proposed negotiation with Taos Pueblo on the water. I'm a ditch commissioner on the Desmontes Ditch Association, and we have been in the process for quite a number of years and working out various water-sharing agreements to ensure an adequate surface water supply to our parciantes within the Desmontes area. We would, we're not opposed, you know, to the concept here, however, we would like to ensure or request that the Desmontes Ditch Association be made part of those discussions because of its potential to have a potentially negative impact on those water-sharing agreements. I'm not saying it is, you know, until maybe we can come up with something, but to leave the Aseca out of that one process, I think at this point, a little bit of fair to the Aseca Association. So we would ask then that we be involved in that because of the potential impact that it has on those sharing agreements.
Thank you, Mr. Miera. Okay. I guess this question is for Mr. Sanger. What are your thoughts on that? And I'd like to hear from the Pueblo as well.
That really gets to the heart of the matter with the change in state law, and what we've agreed to do is to go ahead and try to work it out with Pueblo and with the state engineer's office. I don't have a problem with the Aseca Association being aware of what's going on. It's, we're literally at the beginning of the process to determine how these rights can be dealt with in the face of the statute that now applies. The statute talks about severance. There's unanswered, there are unanswered questions about whether abandonment is severance. Certainly, transfer to another location is arguably severance. So how this ultimately works out, unfortunately, is for the lawyers.
And these are currently being banked with?
We have 20 acre, surface acre feet banked with the lower, with the Mary Posa's Ditch Association.
It's not the same association?
It is.
This one is ditched. I will say that the other ditch.
Okay.
Carlos King.
Okay. Now, I know, Edward, that you put on the, on the computer on the face of another letter from, this is from the New Mexico statutes annotated.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, just clarification, if I may. Commissioner Blankenhorn indicated that he had not seen this statute, and we provided a copy of the statute for your viewing.
No, I said I hadn't read it.
Oh, you hadn't read it. I apologize.
I wanted a lawyer to explain it to me.
Can we have some interpretation of it?
Again, Mr. Chairman, my recommendation is that that discussion occur in executive session.
Very good. Okay. Anyone else that wishes to speak for or against the Bosale subdivision? At this time, I can go ahead and close the public hearing, and we'll entertain a motion for executive session.
So moved, Chairman.
Second.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Yes.
Mr. Sanchez.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Any ideas to how long it may take?
It should only take about 15 minutes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And, Mr. Chairman, if we could, just on the record, say that is the exception, Section 1015-1H3 for adjudicatory deliberations.
Okay. Thank you.
Chairman, if I may, are you going to executive session? I would-
Mr. Chairman, you just voted to close the public session. If you need to reopen it to hear comments, that would be appropriate, but you shouldn't hear the comments unless it's reopened.
Okay. What's the wishes of the commission?
Reopen for Mr. Cordova's statement, and then we'll close again.
Is that in the form of a motion?
Second.
Okay. Madam Clerk.
Yes.
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 Yes, go ahead, Mr. Cordova.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I just wanted to respond to Mr. Miera's request to be kept informed. Taos Pueblo has no problem keeping him informed. I just wanted to add that for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Motion again?
Motion to go into executive session. Second.
Madam Clerk.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. Motion to come back out of executive session.
So moved. Second.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Blankenhorn.
Yes.
Mr. Sanchez.
Yes.
Mr. Brucke.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Malone?
Mr. Chairman, the county commission met in executive session pursuant to the exception in Section 1015-1H3 of the Open Meetings Act for adjudicatory deliberations. The only matter discussed was the Bosale subdivision matter before the commission. No decision was made, although I understand that there may be a decision now in public session.
Okay. So move to accept the county attorney's report. Second.
Madam Clerk.
Yes.
Mr. Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Brucke.
Yes. Yes. Okay.
Chairman, I'd like to attempt at a motion.
Okay.
That we approve the Bosale subdivision with the recommendations that were presented by planning staff and also three additional conditions of approval. Those three additional conditions of approval, one would be to permanently and irrevocably, revocably relinquish as distinguished from a severance 18 acre feet per year consumptive use of the surface irrigation water rights apparent to the Bosale subdivision. Also, number two, adding language to disclosure statement that the possibility of uranium in the water exists. And number three, that the ditch association be kept informed of the decisions that are made concerning the water rights in that area.
Mr. Chairman? Commissioner Barone, if you could make clear in that motion that the condition on the 18 acre feet is prior to the marketing or sale of any lots?
Noted.
Everyone fine with that motion? I will go ahead and second. Any other discussion? If not, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Blankenhorn.
Yes.
Mr. Sanchez.
Yes.
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 And Chairman, I just want to note, what a great opportunity for everybody to work together. When people work together, things happen. Thank you. Good luck.
Okay, at this time, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to come back into the regular session for today's meeting.
So moved. Second.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, we'll continue with, I believe we can go on to item 11, budget matters. Discussion, consideration, decision regarding DFA Resolution Number 7, 2014-5. Resolution requesting to transfer expenditures from the Rio Fernando Fire Department Fund to the Capital Enhancement Fund. Do we have Mr. Leandro Cordova? Or you're going to present, Mr. Sanchez?
I'll wing it a little bit. I just got informed about this a minute ago. Basically, this resolution is to transfer some money from, I believe it was Community Improvement to Rio Fernando. Rio Fernando had purchased a computer. This was purchased back when Conrad Cordova was the IT Director. It was his recommendation that the, I guess, the spec of the computer be scaled back a little bit because it was actually going to be probably the most powerful computer in the county. That's how it was ordered. It wasn't, it didn't meet the needs that Rio Fernando had stated. So that computer was then taken back by the county. It was determined to be given to Brian Cribbin in GIS. It would meet his needs. So it's basically just getting the money out of one line item and taking it back into Rio Fernando's budget.
Recommendation, Staff?
Recommend approval, Chairman.
Commissioners?
Move to approve.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Yes.
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 Yes. Item 11B, discussion, consideration, decisions regarding DFA Resolution Number 8.
Chairman, Ms. Martinez will be walking in the door. She's on her way down from Finance.
Mr. Chairman, while we're waiting for her to come in from Finance, I know Mr. Cordova's in the audience here, and I know him and his wife are very proactive in a big celebration that's happening on Sunday. If we give him an opportunity to let us know about the living treasures and how this is all taking place and where it's taking place.
Thank you, Commissioner Barone, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. The Living Treasures was canceled in 2010 by the Town of Taos because Mr. Darren Cordova didn't like the people that were selected that year. So the funding stopped, and after we got a new mayor, we were able to push it through with new council members, you know, Mr. Hons in the audience, I believe, and also we'd like to thank the people for reinstating that particular program. The Living Treasures is honoring the senior citizens that have contributed to the community, and recommendations are judged, and there were four people selected and three more that had been selected in 2010 that never got their award. And they're going to be honored on Sunday at Baton Hall at 1:30 PM. It's a free event, and a meal will be served, and music, and we will honor, you know, if anybody from the Pueblo still here, I think ex-Governor Concha, Mike Concha, has been selected by Taos Pueblo, and we also have Carl Sosi from Pico Tis, Pico Tis Pueblo, who was selected, and Cleo Sisternos from El Prado, and Manjo Trujillo from Ranchitos. Those were, you know, the people that the judges selected after receiving their letters of recommendation from somebody in the community. So we'd like to invite all of you to be present. I think it's a wonderful time to honor our seniors and, you know, to thank them for their contributions, you know, that they have done to this community. Appreciate you showing up at 1:30 Sunday at the Baton Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Cordova. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, also, for pushing this.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Martinez.
I'm sorry about that delay. I got stuck in the office, and you guys were fast when you came back.
That's all right.
So the DFA Resolution Number 8 you're on? Okay, sorry about that. So DFA Resolution Number 8 is basically to increase revenue and expenditures. Taos County has secured a grant award in the amount of $31,320 for the Senior Foster Grandparent Program, and we received an additional $17,468 for the Senior Companion Program. This is in addition to the monies that we've already received for the Aging and Long-Term Services, and we're basically increasing the revenue and expenditures to account for the grant award, and we are requesting approval of this DFA Resolution.
Chairman, are we made whole now? Is this, you know, we had lost quite a bit of money during the process when, I guess when the program ended and we didn't apply for the funding, is the program now whole or is, are we still short monies in that program?
For this program, now that Mike was able to secure the second grant to basically ask for more monies, this will basically replenish the initial grant. So Taos County did get the full amount for the New Mexico Aging and Long-Term Services.
I know that this is one of those programs that, you know, the grandmas in the school and stuff like that.
Yes.
A big benefit to the teachers, a big benefit to the educational process, so thank you.
And earlier, I just wanted to mention, I did bring Amanda Rayal. She was hired as our grant accountant. I wanted to formally introduce you to her. It's always good to have new faces in county government, and she had to leave early, so I apologize for that, but she was here earlier.
I want to mention also, Lupe, that Ms. Rayal has previously worked for the local government division of DFA and also for the state auditor's office, so we do have some good experience. And she did get her start here with Taos County before she went on to college.
Thank you very much.
So move to approve DFA Resolution Number 8.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Blankenhorn.
Yes.
Mr. Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Brucke. Yes.
Yes. Okay, the next item is discussion, consideration, decisions regarding DFA Resolution Number 9.
So DFA Resolution Number 9 basically establishes a new grant for the Department of Transportation and Public Safety. What it is, is it's grants that are geared for the Operation DWI programs, the Buckle Up and the 100 Days and 100 Nights. So what we do is basically, we increase revenues and expenditures to account for this new grant agreement. We will not be asking for a cash advance from the general fund because we do have sufficient funding in this account to start it up.
What is the amount?
The end DWI is in the amount of $17,435. The Operation Buckled Up is the amount of $3,00614, and the 100 Days and 100 Nights of summer is in the amount of $4,021. And this grant will set to expire September 30th of 2015.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And we recommend approval.
Their motion, Commissioners?
So moved, Chairman.
I'll go ahead and second. Madam Clerk.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Next, item 12, Commission Report Matters. Calendars for the month of October, November. Mr. Quanamio.
Yes, sir. We have the calendars for the month of October and November, and we've been in conversation with the Town of Taos as well. We're looking at November 10th to hold a joint session with the Town of Taos governing body, and we'd like to know if that works for this body as well. Apologizing.
At what time?
Later second and then be straightened out. So it's to be determined. I believe Kathy from the Town, former nail, that anytime right now currently works for the Town of Taos. And we've not checked with, I think we've checked with our clerk to see if that would work for her, the one on the- The November 10th to hold a joint session with the Town of Taos. And then the other thing that staff is recommending is that we hold the joint session at the mural room of the Old County Courthouse.
The only thing that I'd like you guys to take into consideration, if you could, is that November 4th is election, and we do have new equipment, so it's going to be really hard-
be really hard for us to be, you know, so if we could just have a, a short session for regular meeting, something, because we do have new equipment, and so I guarantee you that I will be out there checking on polling sites.
Okay, this is for November Fourth?
For November Fourth.
Okay.
Chairman.
But the joint meeting, um...
The joint meeting's fine, no, I'm, I'm just talking about November the Fourth.
Okay.
Basically asking to keep our meeting short on that day.
Very short.
And from County Manager's Office, we're gonna try to push people back to the, and just take care of that, a few housekeeping items internally, and I think there's, uh, BLM would like to come to the commission meeting on the Fourth, and then if the union representing the hospital workers comes in on that day as well, so.
Chairman?
Okay, Mr. Sanchez?
Chairman, Commissioners, had we not talked about, uh, moving up the meeting Fifth or the Sixth, that way you're not under pressure? I know that was brought up, I, I thought it was. Wasn't that something that we had...
I think Mr. Archuleta called someone, the commissioner, he wanted to keep it on the floor. And I wasn't involved in those conversations.
I got a call on that, and I guess to support you folks, you know, move it to the Fifth or the Sixth, but if the others wanted it that...
And, and, uh, just try to keep it very short if we can, uh, Commissioner, Chairman, I know...
Something legal, uh, there's a liquor license advertised for the Fourth, that's where Mr. Archuleta was calling around, I think, proceeding procedurally that has to happen on the Fourth, and I, maybe BLM would push back to another meeting as well.
Go ahead and... Be of the, of this?
Yes.
Please.
The other thing that's gonna occur is on, uh, November Twenty First is open house for the E-Nine-One-One. Chairman, Mr. Malone, is a...
Just a, a quick observation, Mister Chairman, um, in speaking with, uh, the County Manager, in order to set the wheels in motion for the new GRT, if the voters repeal the existing GRT, um, we have to go through that whole process of, uh, authorizing publication, and then publication, and then hearing the ordinance, and it had been my hope to, uh, consider the resolution to publish, uh, on the Seventh, if the, uh, voters choose to repeal the, uh, existing GRT on the Fourth, so that we can get that ball rolling, um, so if we could have that calendar reflect, uh, a special meeting, because it would have to be for that purpose, not just for the canvassing.
Okay, thank you, Mister Malone. And, uh, Brent, uh, the newly-elected officials conference in Santa Fe, BIPo, when is that?
That's, uh, December...
It's not till December?
Eighteenth, Nineteenth, and Twentieth.
Okay. And the, the, the retreat with the new commission and...
Well, I apologize, the BIPo is, uh, December Ninth, Tenth, and Eleventh, we're looking at having the commission retreat with the new commissioners on the Seventeenth, Eighteenth...
Of December?
Of December.
Do you, do you have a December calendar already?
Uh, I know Renell's working on it, we could email the commission, what we currently have.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, anything in addition to? Okay. Um, next item is the, uh, Item B, uh, Item Twelve, Discussion, Consideration, Decisions to Direct Staff to Work on Memorandum of Agreement with the Town of Taos for the Operational Use of the Old County Courthouse, Mister Blankenhorn.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, of course, we're bringing this back from, uh, two meetings ago, and, and the point is that, eh, we really can't maintain the status quo, the tenancies we have currently don't meet with DFA, uh, regulations, uh, we all know that we need improvements to the building, and so the point is to try and find a way to move forward, and I believe that the best way, uh, for us to move forward is to work with the town on this. It's the county's building, uh, but it's on the plaza, and the town is, is, uh, very much involved with the revitalization of the plaza, and the advantage to us is it gives us a partner, uh, who can help share in expenses, uh, and who can go in with us on grants. I think that we, we gain an edge if we apply for grants in the name of both governmental entities. Uh, I think the advantage for the town is that they get a, a seat at the table. Obviously, uh, you know, Mister Malone's not gonna be able to craft any kind of a memorandum of agreement without answering a, a series of questions, uh, that I'm sure he'll come up with. Uh, he can work with, uh, with Floyd at the town and come up with a list of questions, and hopefully we can address some of those at our joint meeting if this, uh, if this motion passes. And, and so with that, uh, I'll make a motion in accordance with the item on the agenda to direct staff to work on an MOA with the Town of Taos for the operational use of the Old County Courthouse.
Do you have anything in writing, Mister Blankenhorn, as to what ideas you may have on how to, um, propose, make a proposal to the Town of Taos?
I don't have any, I don't have any...
Uh, proposing joint ownership of the building? Uh, a sharing of the revenues from the building?
No, not, not at all, uh, Mister Chairman. Um, it, it's, it's for operational, uh, not for, um, uh, shared ownership or, or shared revenues, it's to move forward with the improvement and operation of the Old County Courthouse. And so the types of questions that I'm sure will need to be answered is, um, what will the decision-making process be? And so one potential answer there would be a majority vote of, of both governmental entities. Another, uh, question that'll have to be answered is, uh, the tenancies, will all of the tenancies be for in-kind services, or will some of the tenancies, uh, be at market value? Another question that'll have to be answered is, uh, whether or not to split the cost of, uh, hiring a manager, for example, to coordinate the grants and to, um, organize the tenancies and, and keep track of all of the tenancies. Fact of the matter is, is there are people, uh, who are really good at this sort of thing, you know, at, at organizing fundraising and, and grant proposals, and, and managing, uh, the building in a way that can help us move it forward. And I'm hopeful that we'll be able to find somebody, um, who's really good at that, and we'll be able to divide the costs of that person with the Town of Taos, any grants that we can get, I'm hopeful that we'll be able to, uh, split the, um, uh, the matches with the Town of Taos. It gives us a lot more leverage, and it gives the town a seat at the table in the plaza, and, and I think it's, uh, uh, I think it's in the community's best interest for us to find a way to work with the town on this matter, and, and that's why I've proposed the motion.
I guess, um, uh, what comes to my mind is, there was an article in the Taos News a few weeks ago, where the Town of Taos has a, uh, huge amount of buildings that, um, they're not capable of, of taking care of properly at this time, and, you know, and in fact, UNM has taken over probably some of the larger buildings and stuff. And then this morning, I, uh, had some discussion also with, uh, the director from Ancianos, Mister Trujillo, and, um, he's been requesting some monies, uh, from the Town of Taos for help at Ancianos, at least Thirty Thousand Dollars, and from what I understand, he was rejected, that, that request was rejected, and instead, the, Mister Bellis gave him a, a huge one-inch-thick, uh, grant agreement or application, I, I'm not sure.
No, that's not true, Mister Romero, and Counselor Hahn is sitting in the office, in the audience, if you'd like to address him.
Okay.
We actually, and Mister Trujillo, eh, he is your staff, and he went into our arena and asked for Thirty Thousand Dollars, and then got a little bit, I wanna say, um, started attacking our staff. He basically asked for the money, we told him there's a process that we have put in a place, just like you guys have a process here in the county, to acquire money. All we asked him is to fill out the paperwork, the money has been set aside to give to the Ancianos program. Uh, again, you know, these are monies that we continue to ask back and forth, the town asks for money for the library, the county, the county asks money for Ancianos, we have graciously set apart monies for Ancianos, and, and it's just...
I'm getting a totally different...
Yeah, well...
Side of the story from, from Mister Trujillo. But also the fact that, um, I, I guess he's been asking for the turning over of the ownership of the building, of the Ancianos building, to the county from the town, and, and it's been rejected, I'm, I'm not sure if that's true or not at this point, but I, I just kind of wonder, you know, the, the town wanting to take on more buildings,
there's no consideration...
Can't take care of what it's got currently.
But, but there's no consideration of a transference of ownership here, uh, this is a totally different situation than Ancianos, or, or, or any of the buildings that, uh, that the town has accumulated through the years, this, this is not about transfer of ownership, this is about working together to, um, improve and get the best use out of that, uh, that great gem that, that we, that the community has in the plaza.
Why don't we consider the, the, the plaza itself as well with the courthouse? Why don't we throw that into the mix as well? I would like to see that, I, both, both entities belong to the people of Taos County.
And we agree with you, Commissioner, we need money to, to, uh, again, to put the infrastructure underneath it, we need money to pave it, we need money to, to, uh, to, um, do all the infrastructure there that we've been maintaining for years, we'd be excited to...
We oughta consider the plaza as well.
I'm sorry, you, you wanna, would you like, uh, me to add that to the motion?
Sure.
And that would be, what, what, uh, the, the plaza itself, the... Help me out here.
The infr- well, the plaza itself, the, the plaza parking, what is within, between the boundaries of the streets on the plaza, surrounding the plaza. Apparently, I mean, it was brought up a, a few months ago that there was a, a deed where the county, in fact, owns that, and I don't know if Mister Malone has looked into that at all, but it would definitely be something worth exploring, uh, to make sure that that, the ownership of that is, is cleared.
Mister Chairman? Bob wanted to... Two, two quick things, uh, one, just clarification for my purposes, since Commissioner Blankenhorn mentioned that I would be meeting with Mister Lopez, Floyd Lopez, and if this passes, you know, working on this, if I understood correctly, the motion is that we start the process by, um, Mister Lopez and I meeting and coming up with a list of questions to come back to the two bodies in the joint session that would need to be answered, not actually starting to negotiate the agreement, because we need the answers first.
Yes, that was exactly it.
And, uh, Mister Chairman, um, I would have concern about amending the motion to include the plaza, because it's not on the agenda. I mean, it would be appropriate at some future date to add that, but I, I would...
I would like to request that on the next commission meeting, we include that, uh, the plaza on there.
Well, we can add it, but I'm, I'm gonna stick with the motion I made, but on the next meeting, we could, we could put that on the agenda and, uh, as a topic of additional consideration for, uh, an additional memorandum.
So go ahead and restate your motion.
Uh, make a motion to, uh, direct staff, um, to begin work on a memorandum of agreement with the Town of Taos for the operational use of the Old County Courthouse.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, Mister Cordova?
I think this is a decision that, uh, should involve, you know, uh, we've had, uh, a few things where we had to come back and had some, uh, discussion and input from the community that, uh, decisions have been made regarding that. As, uh, as a historian of the town of, uh, Ta- Taos County, I, and at the university, I've taught many of these courses, uh, I think it's very, very important that, uh, there's some input, you know, we had, uh, the issue with Red Willow Park prematurely being done, you know, we had, uh, an issue of, uh, mistrust within, you know, in the past few years, uh, between the county and the, and the city. A memorandum of understanding, I think, is, uh, pretty, uh, premature in this particular case, without really having some input from the community, you know, I, I think that, you know, and I'd be willing to, you know, of course, you wouldn't ask me, but I, I'd be willing to serve on such a committee, you know, and, uh, you know, uh, talk about, uh, what, what we want in there, you know, we've already, you know, it's out, out of the community that Mister Blankenhorn wants a, a bar or a brewery, or something, you know, just to set up as a commercial venture, you know, and I, and I have no problem with that, after, uh, having been a citizen, that we discuss that, you know, that we discuss what kind of, uh, what kind of businesses we wanna have in that particular courthouse. I think it's wonderful that, uh, that, uh, town and the county wanna have a collaborative, uh, idea here, but to, uh, direct somebody to do a memorandum of understanding at this, uh, I think is kind of premature, you know, uh, we, we had, uh, the situation where, uh, motions have been rescinded, and, uh, you know, we're having a, a new majority coming into the county commission, starting, uh, in December, you know, what, uh, uh, they should be included in, uh, any discussions about what we wanna do with, uh, those particular things, I don't, I don't know what their feelings are regarding, uh, regarding that, you know, any of the new commissioners coming in, and, uh, input from the old commission. I, I definitely think it's a gem, you know, I, uh, I was telling, during the break this morning, uh, telling Mister Blankenhorn, uh, my idea was that, you know, I, I have the historical walking tours, and I offered it to the town, I offered to the county, that I would be willing to do lectures for free in the, in the county, uh, uh, in the, in the county complex about the history of our community, you know, uh, instead, uh, we hear from you guys, from people who wanna do away with Lotte Burger, and, uh, McDonald's, and Walmart, and things like that, you know, just, uh, you know, uh, because they wanted to, uh, be Adobe-style or whatever, but, uh, you know, I, I think that, uh, this particular, uh, item on the agenda, uh, merits a little more thinking, and, you know, to say, you know, and I, um, if the motion would say that we cooperate with the town and, and the public in coming up with a solution, that would be acceptable to, uh, to, to the members of this community, but, uh, you know, we are, uh, we are a community that, uh, has lost our culture, our traditions, and our, uh, uh, you know, uh, our language, and without a language, you know, the body, you know, the body doesn't have a soul, you know, but we've, uh, downplayed, we said our, we put our kids in special education because they don't know English when they first walk into that classroom, and then they're labeled for the rest of the twelve years of, of school, and they drop out, you know, but I, uh, I think that, uh, you know, history and language, tradition are very, very important in our community, particularly in Taos, but, uh, you know, uh, there are those in the community, both of us in the community, that are capable of advising you guys, you know, and I think that, uh, being elected, we elect you to, uh, to represent us, but that doesn't mean that, uh, we want you to represent us and make, uh, abrupt decisions that, uh, that are going to have a long, uh, a long-term consequence in our community, so, you know, please, uh, be careful on this, and, you know, let's have some public hearings on it, you know, I, uh, Mister Blankenhorn, I think that, you know, maybe we can have a brewery there, and I'll go have a beer with you.
Well, that sounds good, that sounds good, Arsenio, and, and of course, this is, this is just the, the first, first step in many, and, you know, it's nowhere near, uh, the actual adoption of a memorandum, and there's gonna be lots of, uh, lots of discussion at joint meetings, uh, and, and other meetings in the future, so, thank you for that, and, and as always, we'll be looking for the community for guidance.
Okay, uh, motion has been made and seconded, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Mr. Sanchez?
Yes.
No. Okay, motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Take it.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.